Members of the public, in accordance with the provisions of the Planning Act, please be advised that if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at a public meeting or make written submissions to this council of the city of Hamilton before council makes a decision regarding the zoning by law amendment, the person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision of the council of the city of Hamilton to the OMB and the person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing of an appeal before the OMB, Ontario Municipal Board unless in the opinion of that board there are reasonable grounds to do so. So just want to put a call out. This is for 118 Hat Street in Dundas. Is there anyone here to speak to that item? Going once. Anyone here to speak to that item? Going twice. Last and final call. 118 Hat Street, Dundas. Going three times. So I would like to ask the committee to close the public meeting, please. Thank you. Councillor Green, Councillor Partridge, all those in favor. Thank you. So I'm going to defer to staff for a comment because I believe there's been a development. No pun intended. No, they want to defer it.
Through you, madam, or through the chairman. The applicant's agent, Mr. Webb, contacted staff late last week and the applicant at once is asking that this matter be referred back to staff, that the public meeting be closed in order for an opportunity for the applicant or agent to meet with the ward councillor for the purposes of discussing possible revisions to the proposal. They're looking essentially whether or not there's an opportunity to increase the amount of growth floor, the size of the building on the site. And before they do that, they want to have a chance.
And just for procedure wise, if this does come back and there are people from the public who don't like the new changes, would they be allowed to speak to it at that time?
Through, or to the chairman, yes, the committee could keep the public meeting either open or to allow for delegations at that next public, when this matter comes back, to plan a committee for further consideration.
Thank you. So committees wish, please. Councillor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm assuming that no one has talked to the councillor for the area to see if she would be okay, but I would suggest that we leave the public meeting portion open and to allow residents to have the opportunity to speak to any changes. And I'll be happy to move that if I can get a second, please.
Thank you. Councillor Farr, seconding in that. So, Mr. Webb, we're going to keep things status quo until it comes back to the planning committee after you've made your changes with the area councillor.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. So, all those in favor of deferral until, with the public meeting staying open? All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. All right, so now we're on to seven. We've got presentations which there are none. So we're on to 8.1. Folks, this is going fast. Appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, OMB, I just jinxed that. OMB at the city of Hamilton's refusal or neglect to adopt an amendment to the Town of Flamborough zoning by law number 90-145Z for lands located at 383 Dundas Street East and 4 First Street in Waterdown, PED 16139, Ward 15. And this has been referred from the July 5th meeting. So I would like to, for the benefit of the public and update the committee members, this is not a statutory public meeting, as said earlier, under the Planning Act. And as the applicant has been, application has been appealed, the matter is now in the hands of the OMB and the council is not in a position to make a decision regarding the application. This item is on the agenda for the committee to make a recommendation to council as to what position the city should take at the appeal. The ward councillor's motion had July 5th, 2016, planning committee meeting referred this matter to this meeting to provide an opportunity for the public to share its views with the committee members for their consideration. Legal staffer in attendance to provide advice regarding the appeal and it is preferable to hear that advice in camera. We have written submissions. May I first have a motion to receive the written submissions? Item 8.1I to 8.1XVII. Councillor Partridge, Councillor Skelly, all those in favor. All right, so I'm going to refer to the ward councillor at this point in time and then we'll ask the delegates to come down.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. And as you've said in your notes, that the purpose of this meeting today is to allow the residents to come in and speak to the committee members so that their voices can be heard. This is a highly contentious development on the site that's being proposed. I am against the development as it is currently. We had been trying to negotiate.
Thank you. Okay, so let's get to where we were. Okay. And when you come down after you speak, would you mind putting your name and address in that book? That's recording you as well, another way of keeping track. And just a reminder, five minutes, please.
Okay.
Okay, everyone?
Right. Thank you very much. My name is Cindy Mayer and I reside in the subdivision built in 1975 behind the subject property. My husband and I purchased our home there 37 years ago. First of all, I'd like to thank the city of Hamilton planning staff for not adopting an amendment to the zoning by law to allow the proposed development on the proposed property in regard to the density, the lack of green space, conformity with the existing neighborhoods, the proposed walkways and parking, but most of all, the traffic and consequent safety issues. Waterdown has been plagued with traffic issues for at least three decades. In the Burlington-Hamilton area, there are three major east-west corridors, the QEW, the 403, and Highway 5, known as Dundas. And westward toward Waterdown, it's five lanes, including the center turn lane, but as it enters Waterdown, just about 200 feet from where this proposed development is, it narrows into three lanes, including a center turn lane. It continues as a three-lane road through the center of town. During the day, this major route in our town is used by various types of transportation, including many trucks, especially over-dimensional escorted vehicles and dump trucks. We have one of Southern Ontario's largest quarries located just west of Waterdown. So aggregate for numerous projects for East Waterdown, Burlington, and even Oakville are transported through our town all day long. This route is also used by numerous commuters and school buses. To build a medium-density development on this busy highway would create more turning traffic and I feel that would be unsafe. Dundas Street through Waterdown is also the alternate route whenever there's a problem with the QEW and the 403, and this happens on a regular basis. Whether it's accidents on those routes, the closing of the Skyway Bridge, like a couple of weeks ago, for many hours, weather conditions, or road construction. When these conditions occur at any time of the day or during the regular evening rush hour into Waterdown, the traffic on Dundas comes to a standstill. When that happens, our subdivision then becomes the Milverton-Boulding bypass with numerous cars racing through our neighborhood. Recently, we've had new 40K signs installed and a speed board, but it really makes no difference. My concern with the proposed development is the walkway on Boulding Avenue and Milverton will include, will encourage more street parking on a winding access that already has volume and speeding issues during peak times. I just want to draw your attention to the map that I've got with my speaking notes here on page three. At the top here, this is where Dundas is heading into Waterdown. And so a lot of people, when it stopped, instead of staying on Dundas, in order to get like several dozen parking spots ahead, they will veer through our subdivision like this. This happens regularly. And you can tell when it does because people are speeding through neighborhood unfamiliar vehicles, lots of commercial vehicles. And there's 13 turns they have to make, and six of them are stop signs. And you can bet that they don't stop and they don't slow down. So extra parking, that would be allowed on Milverton and Boulding because of this development having a walkway and having inadequate parking, I feel is going to be a safety issue. As well, the little part that's highlighted in orange there is First Street. It's right beside the development. And the walkway proposed there is kind of about halfway up a 300-foot stretch that is on an incline. We already have numerous problems with that and most of us haven't complained. But if people are parking on either side, and sometimes on both sides because it is allowed, they are allowed to park on both sides. When you're leaving the subdivision, you're heading down a hill. It's kind of a blind hill. And as soon as you start to head down, you see that there are people coming quickly into the subdivision, which they need to because Highway 5 is so busy that if you make a turn in, you've got to be quick. And a lot of times, especially in the mornings when people are heading out to work, it's school buses coming in and you almost, you know, hit them head-on. So you have to stop, sometimes you have to pull over. There shouldn't be any parking allowed on that street, either side, for about 300 feet from Dundas to James Street. Anyway, those are my concerns. One of the things that this map doesn't show is the bigger picture. And that is that the bypass in Waterdown that's well underway, oh, sorry, I don't think it's going to be a great solution to any of this because of the increased development everywhere in Waterdown. And that's no disrespect to planning staff. They've probably done a really great job. I've been there for 37 years, tried to figure out a better route. None of us have come up with a better solution. There just isn't one. We're bound by the escarpment on the south side. There is a large, deep ravine and railway that runs right through the center of town. There's 200-year-old buildings that are right on the street through Dundas. There's just no solution. So I don't think we should be allowing this type of density. Anyway, I'd like to thank the planning department for allowing this meeting so that our concerns can be heard. And I'm very disappointed that the developer has so little concern for residents of the community that he's decided to ignore us and go directly to the OMB.
Thank you very much. And your councillor has some questions for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. And Cindy, welcome. I really appreciate you and the other residents taking the time to come in today. So we had a public meeting back in March that the developer agreed to come in, do the presentations. Were you present at that meeting?
No, my husband was, but I was unable to come.
Okay, all right. I'll save that question for later then. When you're talking about cut-through traffic, and the cut-through traffic is a huge issue throughout all of Waterdown, but in particular in your area, because my office fields so many phone calls about traffic and cut-through. How many cars are we talking about over what period of time, would you say? I just want the committee to get a feel for, you know, we're not talking about a few cars here.
It's hard to say because during the day, there's not a lot. It's mostly the evening traffic that, you know, a lot of people work west or east of Waterdown, so they're heading back into town. It's worse on Fridays usually than any other day of the week, but on any given day of the week, it would be from, say, 4 till 6, maybe starting even earlier, 40, 50 cars. I mean, it's hard to tell because some of them could be neighbors, you know? But when the Skyway was closed, a car every second.
Yeah.
Just every second. And just speeding beyond. I mean, and this isn't new. My kids are in their 30s and when they were young, the neighbors that lived there then, and we had this rule that kids weren't allowed to play in the front yard on Friday afternoons because they could be too close to the street. And not just because of this issue, but a lot of people misjudge the curves in the streets around Milverton and Boulding. And twice in the last 30 years, we've had people end up on our front lawn, one taking out a tree. So it's not a safe issue and we shouldn't be allowing any more traffic through there.
Yeah, I appreciate that very much, Cindy. And, you know, I've walked, I've walked the streets, I've stood there with residents, and I would say you're being very generous at 40 to 50 because I would say there's hundreds, hundreds of cars that scream through that subdivision. And in fact, the traffic congestion is so bad on Dundas that every media outlet in this city, and I'm going to name them, The Review, Flamber Review, The Hamilton Spectator, CHTV, and CBC have done extensive coverage of the traffic congestion and posted videos on all of their sites to show the backup in both directions, right in front of First Street where this development is proposed to go, all the way through town. And it is just backed up for a kilometer or more in both directions. So I thank you very much for your presentation and for coming in today, Cindy.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Cindy. And our next one, don't forget to sign in. Thank you. Jim? And the next one up and final one is Mike. So just to give you a heads up. Thank you, Mike. Good morning, Jim. Again, five minutes, please.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and councillors and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Duchel. I live at 6 First Street, which is, it borders to the northwest, this proposed development. I've been a Waterdown resident, actually, all my life, over 60 years. The proposed development, in my opinion, this planned development doesn't really fit in to the surrounding neighborhood, which consists of detached, single-family homes. We're putting all these, you know, to put in, say, 80-plus townhomes here would sort of stick out like a sore thumb. There are really no nearby parks for kids to play. You know, the parking is really going to be a challenge. You know, the kids riding their bikes, I mean, they've got to enter the roadway through Highway 5. And, you know, you've got pedestrians and bicycles and the traffic congestion, especially in the evenings and early in the mornings, is quite busy. The access and egress onto this proposed subdivision is from Dundas. And, you know, there's basically five lanes turning into, I would say, two lanes because the middle lane, there are, you know, down through Waterdown, they've got barriers, so you can't really use that middle lane unless you're making a turn at a corner. So you really have five lanes going into two and, you know, the congestion is terrible. You just go there, you know, between, say, 3:30 and 6:30 and you can see, you know, you're really backed up. The traffic is backed up for at least coming from the east to the west, you know, at least a kilometer. And it's difficult to get in and out of First Street without someone stopping. And, you know, I've noticed, you know, coming that way for years, you know, from working in Burlington and now working in Waterdown, coming from east to west, I'm seeing a lot of road rage. And it's, you know, people, you know, cutting in and it's just, it's not, in my opinion, a good thing. And then if we're going to add another 81 homes in there, and you can figure there's going to be, like, these days, we usually have two cars per household. If they get teenagers, they might have another car. It's really going to be a mess at that particular location where this development is planned. There's also, you know, service vehicles, you know, if there's an ambulance or if there's a fire truck, you know, trying to squeeze around inside this subdivision, you know, with cars parked everywhere. You know, people fixing, you know, furnaces and stuff, where are they going to park to service those units, you know, down the road? So it's, I mean, I can see some problems. You know, the kids, the kids are going to be, you know, walking towards the park. You know, if they're going to go to a park by bicycle, you know, they're going to have to take access through Highway 5. And then there's that chance of, you know, someone getting hurt, you know, with all that traffic. So it's really, in my opinion, not a good location to put a development like this. You know, I think it would be better off in a different location where you're closer to parks, you've got the places for the kids to go, you know, the traffic isn't so congested. Another location which is, you know, has got, I believe, 58 townhouses, the Bohemian Restaurant, which is just a little west of this, of Waterdown, on the west side of Waterdown. It's a smaller, smaller, well, it's, the location that we have is a smaller location than that location, which has 58 homes, and this one is planning to put 81, I believe. So, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me that this, you know, this conflict should go here. I think what Waterdown needs is more of a, we've got all these older homes. I'm a real estate agent, so I mean, I'm looking for small bungalows for people in Waterdown who want to downsize. And there's really no place for them to go because they need a bungalow. They need something like what you've got behind the Waterdown post office. There's almost, somewhere between 40 and 50 bungalows with lofts and with single-car garages, so, you know, the elderly can go there and have a, you know, still drive, have a car to, or a garage to park in and not have to worry about any maintenance. This is the kind of project that we need in Waterdown.
Jim, one more minute, please. I was trying to catch your eye, but you weren't looking here.
Yeah, okay. And then I think something like this would be a better, a better fit for that spot because these guys aren't going to be doing a lot of traveling, they're not going to record to go to a lot of parks. But if we can think about something like that, so we can keep our residents in town instead of having them having to go to Simcoe or someplace where these are available. So something for the city to think about. And I just see it's a bit of a shame that we have all this work done by the city, by the planners, and by the residents who want to have some input, and it all comes down to one person, you know, the Ontario Municipal Board. One person's going to make that decision, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your.
Just a second. We have two councillors that would like to ask you some questions. So I'll go to your ward councillor first and then Councillor Skelly.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. And Jim, thanks very much for coming down. You raised several very interesting points, and one of them was about the size of the property. The report actually that's in our binders in front of us says 79 townhomes, but it is actually 81. So you are correct in that. I just wanted to make sure the committee members knew that. And it is 1.26 hectares that they're proposing to build the 81 acres on, or 81 townhomes are. Is that correct? Is that your understanding?
It could be. It's, I know it's, I'm not sure of the exact size, sorry.
Yeah, and thank you through you, Madam Chair. And it is considerably smaller than the Bohemian lot, development that's at the other end of town that has 58 townhomes. It has a much bigger lot and amenities in it. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for raising those points.
Thank you. Just a minute, Jim. Councillor Skelly. No, it's fine.
Thank you, Jim. And this is actually just more of a statement and it's echoing the concerns of the councillor, the ward councillor. You know, I believe that development is important. We understand the value of development, but at what cost? And if any of our councillors have not been in the area to check out the congestion, it is unbelievable. And I don't think that we could, that the city would, or that area would actually benefit with this type of development. I think it would simply add to an already unbearable situation in terms of traffic flow. I think it was Cindy that pointed out, I don't know what the solution is, but adding this great intensification of development in that area simply will not help traffic flow. It is unbelievable how congested it is, and I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, for coming down. And the last one is Mike. Thank you for signing in, Jim. I forgot to remind you.
Good morning. My name is Mike Hawke, and I live with my family at Forbal County Court, which is located just north of the subject property, and I've been there for 28 years. And you're going to hear some repetition, obviously being the third guy on the lot here, whatever. But in any event, while we are not opposed to residential development taking place at this location, we are opposed to what is being proposed at present. There's been extensive development in the Waterdown area. However, the predominance has appeared to have taken place in greenfield space where it is known that high intensification would be taking place. Other than the nursery, this area is made up of predominantly single-family homes and the addition of 81 townhouses clearly does not conform. When approving new development, I believe that consideration and strong regard should be given to the nature and makeup of the immediately surrounding area and the impact it will have on those who currently live there. In those areas where single residential homes were already in existence, precedent has been set in two areas that we know of. The Bohemian townhouse development is located on a 1.15 hectare piece of land with 58 units and one entrance onto Dundas Street. The Condon proposal is for 81 townhouse units on the approximate 1.06 hectare piece of land with two entrances, one onto Dundas and one onto First. The perimeter townhouses in the Bohemian development are all two stories in height, with the intent, I believe, of trying not to overwhelm the surrounding homes. Unfortunately, the backyards of the northern side of this development are still overwhelmed by the townhouses and as a result, all privacy, not to mention portions of daily sunlight, appears to have been lost. As a side note, the Bohemian development is located in the west end of town on Dundas Street, where the road is five lanes wide, has high visibility, and has quick access to Highway 6. The secondary precedence is the Waterdown South Secondary Plan, and I refer specifically to Appendix A to report PED 10171, page 12 of 62, where it states, "The new lots along the western limit of the secondary plan area shall serve as a transition area between the established homes and new residential development internal to the Waterdown South community. The implementing zoning by law shall ensure that all new lots, immediately opposite those on Flanders Drive and Rosecliff Place, have a similar lot width at the point where the new lots are opposite to the existing lots. Based upon the various designations, a low-density residential 1 or low-density residential 2 would fit in much better and more effectively with not only the neighborhood, but the location of this site in regards to traffic. The Condon property located at the corner of Dundas Street and First Street is a unique location when it comes to traffic, is located at a pinch point on Dundas Street, on the top of a hill with a blind spot and improper daylight corners looking both east and west along Dundas. Short of expropriating all the homes down the hill and the businesses through the village, this will always be the way. Add to this the approximately 8,000 to 10,000 new cars. That will be added when the Waterdown South Secondary Plan and the Madamy Cranberry Development on the north side of Dundas is completed. This problem will not only intensify the traffic Armageddon that already exists here, but the neighborhood roads will become even more congested with parking and overflow traffic, as already evidenced by the increase in fast-moving cars and the recently installed 40-kilometer speed limit signs. Although the scale of this development pales in comparison to the size of the above-mentioned ones, we don't believe having high density at this specific site helps to remediate or minimize the traffic problem, nor conforms with the existing neighborhood. While we understand there are new provincial guidelines with respect to intensification, a one-size-fits-all approach is not what is needed here. Unique situations require unique solutions, and we trust you have the vision and authority to come up with the right decision. The greenhouses in Metal Barn that currently sit on the Condon property are approximately six and a half meters in height. As we understand it, the developer is requesting a height modification to 13 and a half meters. At this height, not only would the townhouses tower over the surrounding properties, but all privacy would be lost and daylight would be greatly affected. There are multiple substantial modifications being requested to the current plan, and one would have to believe that the only person benefiting is the developer. When the minimums are further minimized and the maximums further maximized, one begins to wonder why we should have any standards at all and just let the developers do what they want to do, particularly those who do not appear to be interested in communicating and working with the neighborhood."
Mike, one more minute, please.
"When making development decisions today, hopefully we're considering its effects on tomorrow, especially as it pertains to building harmony and cooperation amongst the neighbors in these new developments. When there's no place for children to play, there are too few guest parking spaces for family and friends who want to visit. When there's no green space, adverse situations are created and tension and disagreement comes into play, and any sense of community becomes difficult to establish. Says Hamilton is a community of communities. There is currently a walkway proposed on the northeast side of the property. As presented, it would come out in the middle of a bordering residence driveway and would provide access to Boulding Avenue. Not only would this create a tremendous liability situation for the homeowner with respect to possible pedestrian collisions and want-to-time slip-and-fall claims, it's also an infringement on their property. Fact that this is even in the plans highlights the lack of regard on the part of the developer. In addition, this would also provide a convenient means for off-site overflow parking for whatever. Remember, what is being proposed is a major intensification over what is currently there. While I've been advised that compatibility..." While I've been advised that compatibility, compatible as it pertains to the development means land uses and building forms that are mutually tolerant and capable of existing together in harmony within an area, and it should not be narrowly interpreted to mean the same as or even as being similar to, we believe the proposed development in its current form is not compatible by any definition.
Thank you, Mike.
To quote, just one sec, to quote councillor Ferguson from last week's Hamilton Spectator article regarding monster homes in Ancaster, "But it has to be compatible with the neighbors, and we are trying to find that balance." We hope this will be the approach taken with our situation as well. Thank you.
Councillor Partridge.
Yes, thank you very much, Mike. Thank you for coming in. And I'm, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize, uh, your mum and dad, Malin Marilyn Hawke. They're true leaders in our community, not only of Flambro, but, uh, the city of Hamilton, many, many years of being involved. And, um, I want to thank them for hosting, I don't know how many, community meetings around their kitchen table over the last twenty years that, uh, that we've sat in on. So, I do appreciate that. But through you, Madam Chair, Mike, you raised, you raised the issue of the Mountain View development, which is being built directly across the road from this. And, um, there's going to be, I believe, twenty-five hundred to three thousand homes going in, four thousand homes, thank you for the correction, going in. And so far, I think there's about twelve hundred that have been built. And, and so, you know, your points have been made, uh, about the, the traffic congestion, but I'm just wondering, can you speak to the amount of traffic that pours out onto Dundas Street, in, in your opinion?
Well, like, it's massive. First Street has actually become, uh, I don't live on First Street, I'm just sort of slightly east of there.
You're just off that.
Yeah, my folks live on First Street. Uh, First Street has become a connector road between Dundas and Parkside. And, you know, when we talk about the speed through the, the neighborhood, First Street is just a straight shot. And so, the speed that you have going down there is excessive. There's been no real traffic calming measures put in place, i.e. speed bumps or whatever. Uh, we have a stop sign part way down First Street, but it's a, it's a roller. I don't even call it a rolling stop. People just keep, keep going anyways. And, and as I said, being a wider street than the subdivision streets, the vol, the volume's huge. You know what? And it's really just a matter of time before somebody, uh, is in trouble, you know.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. And of course, it gets exacerbated when there's, uh, an accident on the QEW or an accident on Highway Six.
Well, that, well, and then the cut-through starts actually further east before they even get to First Street. But once, if they get to First Street, the frustration, then they decide, well, let's try First Street and see what that does for us. So, yeah, so it, it becomes the same as through the neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you. All right, and thank you. Um, I'm going to, I'd like to make some comments, uh, if you could come back to me, but I'd like to.
Thank you. And, and thank you to everyone for coming out today. We know that this is not your, uh, regular schedule, that you come out, but we really appreciate hearing from you. I need a motion, please, to receive all the delegations, councillor Partridge, councillor Pearson, sorry? And material, oh, we already did that. So, thank you. So, to receive all the delegations and their presentations, councillor Partridge, councillor Pearson, all those in favor. Thank you. I'm going to go to the ward councillor, because keep in mind, folks, whatever the decision is fine, but discussion has to be done in camera.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And so, you know, I'd, I'd like to make, make the motion, put the motion on the table that staff oppose the application at the OMB and represent, uh, this committee and council appropriately. And, um...
And you have a second, or councillor Skelly?
Yeah, I have a second with councillor Skelly. Thank you. And I'd just like to make a couple of comments if I can. And so, folks, you know, you, you've heard from the residents that live in the area, and you've certainly received the material. I want to go back to the community meeting that was held, uh, back in March, and there was well over a hundred and twenty people, a hundred and twenty people. And, you know, when I, when I...
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Counselor. Mike, from Legal.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair. Councillor, what I suggest, um, uh, that you add to your, um, uh, motion is some reasons for the opposition.
Oh, all right, thank you. Would you like to help me with that?
No problem whatsoever. At the, at the appropriate time, I can assist.
So, we have, we have a motion in there somewhere. So, go ahead.
Yes, and, and certainly my comments, I think, are going to give the rationale, uh, to back that up, but thank you, Mike.
Start writing, Mike.
Yeah, yes. So, and, and Mike is our, is our legal counsel on this file, just for the, um, uh, edification of those in attendance. And so, I want to go back to the community meeting that was held. As I said, we had over a hundred and twenty people in attendance, where the developer did, um, present their proposal for this site. And there was clear opposition right across the board from just about everybody. And, um, you know, these are the folks that live there. These are the people that live there day in and day out. The property itself, uh, where the location is, as everyone has mentioned, it's where the pinch point is. So, if you can just visualize it, you've got five lanes coming down to two lanes at the top of the hill that goes down into Water Down that then becomes two lanes, one lane in each direction. And so, it is a huge, huge pinch point. On that site as well, though, is a grading problem. Because of the grading, it is lower than the surrounding properties around it. And I think that's really, really important to note. There's retaining walls on two sides of the property, I believe, um, because of this. And that particular property has regular flooding issues that take place. There's no plan to change the grading. In fact, they can't change the grading on this particular property. And so, I'm very concerned about those ongoing issues. Um, you know, the, the, the people who live to the east, there's, there's a business there and there's two residents, and that, um, uh, the grading difference between their property and the Condon property, which is significantly below, is going to be a huge issue. So, we have that, we have the traffic, which is, which is obvious, and just the density. The density that they're looking to, to change to, it's 1.26 hectare. It's a small piece of property, and they want to put eighty-one townhomes on it. Where at the other end of town, where you have the Bohemian development, which is working out fine, it's on five lanes of highway, it is closer to, I believe, uh, two and a half hectares, and there's fifty-eight townhouses on it. And so, you know, we have examples within our own community that reflect a better density and a better mix of housing. Now, there were comments made about the fact that, you know, uh, it's, it's townhouses. What we need in that community is more senior-friendly development that can accommodate those who want to downsize, want to stay in their community. Right now, there's, there's really nothing. There is really nothing for them. And I know, Madam Chair, you have experienced similar, uh, similar things in your area as have councillor Pearson and councillor Conley and anyone that's got development going on. And so, you know, they talked about the lots that are bordering onto the neighboring lots. They really should be transitioning lots. And instead, they're, they're just going to exacerbate the lack of privacy, the grading issue, and, um, it's just not a good development for this area. There is not enough parking on any of the side streets that would be surrounding this. You cannot park on Dundas, that's out of the question. First Street is already jammed with, um, cars parking on that street from the residents who live there and people who are visiting. The, the, um, visitor parking on this particular development, there's, looking at having a walkway that goes through that development connecting to another, sorry, another street that is behind. And that street is also, uh, very congested, as it is. So, where are these people going to park? And I don't think it's fair to the neighborhood that they would have to start fighting for parking on their own street in front of their homes. The other issue of, uh, green space, there is a severe lack of green space on this particular development. And there are no parks that are close enough to walk to without going out onto Dundas Street. And yes, they say, well, Gatesbury, you know, uh, Park is only about a kilometer away. Well, I don't know how many people with little ones are in tow and in buggies are going to go down a busy street like Dundas over to a kilometer to get to a park. Plus, we have the development of Mountain View, and, um, we have the development of Madamy Homes, which we haven't even talked about, which is also going to be on Dundas, not very far away, on the same side of the street. And I believe there's fifteen hundred homes going in there to two thousand homes, which are already well underway. So, for those reasons, Mike, did you get those? Many of those reasons?
So, Ida has the motion that Mike...
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe, uh, what I've provided to Ida reflects the, uh, reasons that you've set out in your submissions and, um, what the, and also what the residents have indicated. If you need some help reading my handwriting, I'd be, uh, more than pleased to assist.
Lawyers and doctors, yes.
So, just take a few minutes. If anyone else has comments, if you want to take a moment to take a look at this. Does anybody else have any comments while we're waiting for councillor Partridge to look over her motion, her new motion?
Yeah, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So, again, if we're asking questions, we have to be careful, we should be in camera. So, comments? Thank you.
Just procedurally, if, so, just that we're clear, this, this developer is now bypassing local and they're going straight to the OMB. And i- if staff can maybe just take a moment, this was part of our submissions to OMB reform. I know that there's, there's a, a pretty wide province-wide movement now to reform OMB. Just for the people that are present, can they, can you perhaps just comment on that process and how developers sometimes will try to circumvent local decisions and go right to the OMB? Because there might be some folks who don't even understand how the OMB works. It's, I, I've been on council for two years, and I'm still trying to figure them out.
And, and find out how we got to this point.
That's right.
So, Jason, can you please describe, uh, maybe some, some chronological reasons why this is where it is today and, and going forward?
Certainly. So, so through the chair, um, the, the process here is that the appeal is for, for a non-decision of council. Um, and so, when council does not make a decision within the statutory timeframes, uh, generally a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty days, depending on the type of application, uh, the applicant has the right to appeal directly to the board. And when that happens, there is no public meeting before council, um, which would be our, our, our normal course of events, where members of the public would come and make deputations and council would make a decision. Uh, the councillor's correct, this was one of the, uh, concerns that, uh, that council flagged, um, and has raised with the province as part of their review of the Ontario Municipal Board, uh, practices and procedures, uh, about this concern that in those cases where there is a non-decision appeal, that in effect, that, that the public process can be bypassed in that there is no opportunity to have that public meeting in front of council. Uh, so, so the councillor's correct, that is one of the, the issues we have flagged with the province for an area where, uh, the OMB process could be, could be improved.
Thank you, councillor.
Madam Chair, just so that, uh, again, so the public is clear and for the public record, when they, when the public hears for non-decision by the city, it's, the implication of the statement is, is the, suggesting somehow it's solely the city's responsibility for the non-decision. But if you could just make a quick comment as to the process and what happens in those one hundred and twenty days, is it sometimes the case that there's a bit of a, not with this particular case, not commenting on this...
Generally.
...proponent, generally speaking, that there is a shared responsibility to get stuff done within that time period? And if you don't have, uh, parties that are willing parties in this negotiation, that you could essentially run out the clock? Is that a possibility to run out the clock?
So, through the chair, and, and, and yes, speaking generally, not specifically to, to this application, uh, generally, the approach that we, that we take in, in reviewing a planning application is we want to find a way to, uh, find a, find an application that will work, find an application that planning staff can support that will meet the, uh, the, 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 the direction of council. Um, in, in many cases, what that requires is, is a lot of back and forth with the applicant to make modifications. Um, often, there are, uh, some of the ward councillors will do, um, their own public meetings during that period, during the review period, or the applicant may do additional kind of meetings in the community during that period. Um, but all of that counts against that ticking clock, that statutory ticking clock. So, so the clock starts ticking once the application is received and complete. Um, as I said, generally, the practice is that during that review period, while staff is reviewing it, there, there is back and forth discussion and dialogue. And, and generally, with most applicants, that's, that's not an issue. Um, the decision will then advance past the hundred and twenty, hundred and eighty days, um, but the applicant understands that we're working towards a solution. Uh, so, so that is the approach that's typically taken. Um, if an applicant's not supportive of that, and after that time period has run out, it is their right to, to then go directly to the board.
Thank you, councillor.
And lastly, just so, again, this is something I learned, uh, about a year and a half ago, vis-à-vis other provinces, Ontario, there are other provinces that don't allow that kind of gaming ship. Is that correct? There are other provinces in the country that don't have that running clock?
So, through the chair, yeah, practices are different across the province in terms of what the, uh, what the appeals procedure is, whether there is an appeals procedure, um, and how applicants end up before, uh, an, an appeals body.
So, all important factors, I know, as a, as a newer councillor, trying to understand planning, seeing the importance of having a process with integrity, a process that respects local decision-making, and yet, it's, it's, and sometimes the case, if we're not dealing with willing partners, that they can circumvent this entire process and go right to the OMB, which, you know, are politically appointed people, uh, that, that might not know or understand the nuances of local communities. So, I just, I just wanted to state that I respect the fact the councillor is creating room for the residents to have their voices heard, so they can participate at that level and fully support, uh, whatever recommendations she and councillor Skelly have coming out of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Conley.
Well, thank you. Uh, when councillor Partridge was speaking, she could have been speaking about Stony Creek or about Flambro. Exactly the same problems that, that you have, councillor. It is, I don't know about citywide, but it is suburban-wide, I think. And it's a real problem in that, uh, developers will try to get the most they can get, and they'll just push in, push and push you. And we all, the only thing we can do is what we're doing and going and supporting the, not supporting the application, but supporting the OMB and opposing it. And, uh, I think we should be doing more of that, actually, and, and, and we have to get this whole thing under control because it's getting out of control. The government has given us mandates, uh, we have to have more houses per hectare and this kind of stuff. And it's, and it's potentially wrecking some of the, uh, the, the areas that, uh, people have established for years and years. And, um, one of the gentlemen had a good point about, uh, bungalows. I'd love to have a contractor make a hundred bungalows in my area, man, I'd be supporting them a hundred and fifty percent because that's the kind of stuff we do need for, uh, a lot of the seniors that want to downsize but want to stay in their own area, sort of thing. And we just don't have that. I know we don't have it in Upper Stony Creek, and I don't think we have it in Flambro, or we have it in Water Down, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, so, I'd fully support anything, motions that come through to support that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, going back to councillor Partridge, there's no other questions or comments? But councillor Partridge, if you want to read off your motion, please?
Yes, and I'll put my glasses on for this one. Thank you, Mike.
Serial killer writing, eh?
It is, yes. Anyway, moved by myself, seconded by councillor Donna Skelly, that the, uh, OMB be advised that reasons for council's opposition to this file include, but are not limited to, A, traffic volume and safety, B, too high density for the size of the property, C, built form is not compatible character of the neighborhood, D, unacceptable adverse impact on privacy of neighbors, E, insufficient parking and off-site parking impacts, F, lack of outdoor amenities, public and private for the proposed residence of the development site, E, F, G, does not result in a development that is socially or physically in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood. Very good.
Good to go, Mike.
I like that.
I think you get kudos for reading it.
And, and just, Madam, uh, Madam Chair, I just want to say how much I appreciate the committee, uh, considering, uh, approving and accepting this motion. And as councillor Conley said, we have to start taking control of the developments and of our neighborhoods and of our communities. This particular development is not community-friendly, and it's not what Water Down needs. And, um, anyway, so that's my motion, and I appreciate the, uh, consideration of the committee.
And just out of process, Ida, we have a submissions list we have to include. Should it be included in that particular motion? That the submissions made regarding this matter affected the decision by supporting the refusal of the application?
Legal will have to confirm, but I don't, I don't believe so because this was prior to, uh, July first.
Okay, so, Mike, maybe just to keep it all neat and tidy, should we put that at Okay, so Mike, maybe just to keep it all neat and tidy, should we put that at the end?
Through you, Madam Chair, there's no harm in including in part of the motion that the submissions be forwarded to the Ontario Municipal Board. It's not a requirement, but there's no harm in it. And I believe, Ida, in the wording of the, in the motion before my wording also included provision for the retaining of consultants if necessary for the hearing.
Okay, so just to keep, maybe just to tidy it up with a nice, neat bow, that this was supporting the refusal of this application. So it's on the table in front of you, any discussion, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed to the opposition? No, thank you, it's Gary. Thank you again, everyone, for coming out today. 8.2, Urban Hamilton Official Plan Housekeeping Amendment, PED 16060, citywide, tabled from May 31, 2016. 8.2A is an amended Appendix A to the report, PED 16060. May I first have a motion to lift the item from the table? Please, councillor Pusuda, councillor Green, all those in favor? Thank you. Staff are requesting that we approve the report with the amended Appendix A, which is printed in your agendas. However, before considering the report, we have one delegation which we shall hear first. So are there any, maybe what we'll do right now, sorry Suzanne, just, is there any questions for this 8.2? I know I have a lot of them, so I just want to get those out of the way first. So if councillor Pearson can take the chair, please? I did phone staff, we had a conversation, but I really want to make sure that we've got this covered. Sorry, I got all my tabbies here. Okay, so page three of seven in Appendix B4, who am I speaking with?
JJ.
JJ. Okay, so just to be clear, this is to highlight where the park is, and it's to officially put it in as the secondary plan, and Vimbruck did not identify the park, correct? This is no change, this is really just to identify the use of it right now.
Through you, Madam Chairman, that's correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to get that out of the way. And also, on page four of seven, on Appendix B4, 2062 Rymel Road East is currently being used for a water haulage company. I noticed that we wanted to remove it from the special policy. That's not to indicate that the water haulage is now legal, non-conforming, it's just to, what page are we on here? Sorry, I'm catching up to you. Okay.
What page again, sorry?
Page four of seven, Appendix B4. I just want to make sure that the water haulage company is not affected by the decision we make today because they've been there for years, and I don't want this to pull something out from under them.
In B, you said?
Appendix B4, page four of seven.
My Appendix B only has one page.
Sorry?
Is it B4, Appendix B4?
B4.
Okay. I'm thinking, oh no. On page four of seven, okay.
So it's at the top, and we've got the proposed amendment to remove 2062 Rymel Road. So if you can just please reassure me that the water haulage company is still safe, ready to go, we're not changing any zoning on them, they're there, it's nothing, this is not affecting them.
Through you, Madam Chairman, that's correct. This was just a minor mapping error where the extension of the mixed-use medium was too long.
Thank you. So those are my questions, I just wanted to put that out there for our friends who are listening at home. I'll take the chair back, are there any questions on 8.2? Sorry, 8.2 right now until we hear from the delegate? Nothing? Okay, thank you. Suzanne, come on down. And as always, five minutes, please.
Sorry, hon. No problem, you're going to hear from me a lot today, so I will keep it brief.
Sorry?
I'm here for four different items today, so I'll keep it brief.
All right.
So thank you for hearing me today. You'll recall that we had made a submission with the original version of this in May, and I understand through emails with staff yesterday that the one main concern that we had had, which I'm going to coin as the Shell versus May issue.
I'm sorry, just give me a second, wait for this to close. So recapping, you have one issue, you got an email yesterday, so if you want to cover.
Yeah, I was emailing with Mr Robichaud yesterday, and he has confirmed for me that the one main issue that we have had, being the home builders and DILG, was the issue I'm going to coin the Shell versus May issue with respect of various zoning, and that that is not being put forward as part of this report until we've had more consultation. So given that, we are now supportive of this document.
Thank you. So right now, I need a motion to approve, oh, sorry, can I please have a motion to receive the delegation? Councillor Skelly, councillor Collins, all those in favor? Again, any questions from staff? Thank you. Comments from the delegations at the previous meeting and at today's meeting affected the approval of the bylaw with amendments? May I have a motion, please, on the report with the amended Appendix A? Councillor Conley, councillor Pearson, all those in favor? Thank you. 8.3, Improving Planning Application Review, this is citywide, CI-15-E, PED 16040-A. Matter referred to council to the Open Business Subcommittee and the HHHBA Liaison Committee on February 24, 2016 for input. Before we hear from Suzanne, I thought it was Suzanne. Thank you, I got Suzanne here. Suzanne, Mammals delegation regarding item 8.3. Would we like to see the staff presentation? Thank you. I see from nodding of heads, Kristin, are you around? Thank you. So Kristin McCauley to the podium. Am I saying that right?
It's Kristin.
Okay.
Is it on there?
Sorry, Kirsten.
That's okay. Is it on here? Okay. My name is Kirsten McCauley, and I am going to present the Improving Planning Application Review. It is a report that's being brought back from a February committee meeting.
Kirsten, either move the microphone closer to you because you have a quiet voice.
Can't hear me? Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So the purpose of the report is to review the planning approval process and make several amendments or changes to the city's rural and urban official plans related to road widening and complete application requirements for development applications. And this report was presented initially in February of this year, and there was concern expressed by members of the committee and by some of the delegations regarding the timing of the consultation piece of the report. So city council referred the report back to planning staff for additional consultation with the Development Industry Liaison Group and the Open for Business Subcommittee. And I'm here to provide an update on the efforts that have been made since February 2016. So as directed, staff did do consultation with the Development Liaison Group at two separate meetings on February 22 and also on March 21. And we also presented to the Open for Business Subcommittee on May 5. And although there was agreement that public consultation is important, the main concern was the timing of the consultation. The previous report was recommending that that public consultation happened before a complete application was submitted. Both groups cited concerns regarding delaying the planning process, not having all of the information available to them at the time before the complete application is submitted, and then also unnecessary conflict before the applications are submitted, with lack of flexibility in the requirements for consulting with public as well. It is important to note that also during this time, from February to now, there has been a change to the Planning Act through the Smart Growth for Community Act that took effect on July 1. And this amendment, among other things, now requires that an applicant submit a public consultation strategy as part of a complete application for official plan amendments, zoning bylaw amendments, and plans of subdivision. Wrong button, obviously. So the changes that were made to the report as a result of this additional consultation with the DILG and the Open for Business Subcommittee, as well as the changes to the Planning Act, now mean that applicant has to submit a public consultation strategy as part of a complete application. It looks at all of the different consultation methods that could be considered as part of their public consultation strategy. And it is required for official plan amendments and zoning bylaw amendments, as well as plans of subdivision, and may also be required for other applications such as site plans or consents if deemed appropriate. And then also, the applicant or the consultant would be allowed to do that public consultation before the complete application is submitted. And then their consultation strategy would include all of the information that came out of that consultation and how they consulted with the public, and that would be part of their submission. The other recommendation that was considered as part of this additional review was the requirement for the design review panel advice prior to the submission of a complete application. So the design review panel is a pilot project that's been approved by council, and they look at urban design or provide impartial design advice and guidance to the city on applications for significant development proposals. And then through this additional consultation with the DILG and the Open for Business, and through our staff review, it was determined that we would remove this requirement for the design review panel advice until such time as the report comes forward, I believe at the end of the year, on the continuance of this design review panel, and it would be reevaluated at that time through that report. So a little bit about the public consultation strategy guidelines that have been revised as part of our consultation. The goal remains to ensure that the public is informed of proposals in their community and the opportunity to obtain information and voice their support or objection about the development proposals in their community. The Appendix D of your staff report shows the proposed guidelines. The guidelines are to assist in determining your audience of stakeholders and how you're going to consult with them, and provide a full range of consultation methods that may be explored as part of the consultation. It also sets out timelines for which the consultation must occur, so that it's earlier in the process, and allows for staff to work with the consultant and try and address some of those concerns. It also requires that the applicant consider or think about all of the potential issues that might arise and some of the ways that they could address them. The other piece of the report is the recommendations on road widening. This was brought forward at the last committee meeting in February, and there was, I believe, no concerns with this piece of the report, so there was no additional consultation done on the road widening. But I'll just summarize it because it is before you as part of this report. So as previously noted, there were a number of requests to provide decreased road widening than the maximums outlined in the official plans. And staff are required, under the OP, to take the full identified road widening. The only exception to this is permitted by the OP in situations where constraints make it impractical to do so. In this case, an exemption or reduction is possible. Therefore, staff recommends a change to the exemption policy to allow more balanced planning review and more clearly specify the criteria in considering the exemption or reduction in requirements that would be beneficial. The proposed policy would permit the city to allow an alternate requirement where it is determined through the development review process that is not desired or feasible to acquire the full widening due to significant adverse impact on existing built form and existing streetscape, the natural heritage system, or a cultural heritage resource. And the proposed policies would also permit alternative requirements based on recommendations of other city-initiated studies in specific areas, such as an EA or streetscape master plan. An alternate widening requirement is, if an alternate road widening requirement is deemed appropriate for an application based on the criteria, but staff still needs the additional land for infrastructure purposes. We could consider an easement in that situation. It would be uncommon, but maybe the best option for this situation. Also, to ensure that there's a consistent standard of review and to ensure that requests have been fully evaluated on the criteria in the OP, staff is recommending that a right-of-way impact assessment be added to the official plan as a potential requirement for a complete application. This assessment would review potential impacts based on the criteria and provide a rationale for alternative requirements. We're also making some recommendations to change some of the policies that are in the rural official plan to be similar in the urban official plan, so that there's consistency across both official plans. This means that minor site plan applications, normally widening would not be required as a condition, but the city has discretion to require it. For example, if it is needed immediately for something like the LRT. To clarify for development proponents and staff, which applications would be considered minor and would normally be exempt, staff have prepared a short guideline, which is, we are requesting that council endorse, and that's Appendix D to your report. And then also, the recommendations related to road widening remain the same as previously presented in the report in February, just to reiterate that. And then finally, the guidelines. So the urban and rural official plans provide the ability for the city to establish guidelines to provide direction on content and scope of supporting information and materials that are submitted as part of planning applications. The report continues to recommend the guidelines for planning justification reports, which were put forward at the February meeting as well. The guidelines are meant to assist applicants in understanding the city's expectations for these reports, and these are the most common reports that are submitted for a planning application, and they are a key document that staff uses to review development applications, and they provide detailed descriptions and planning rationale for the proposal. It is a primary way for development proponents to justify why they feel a proposal is appropriate. No changes to these guidelines have occurred as a result of the additional consultation. And then also, as mentioned previously, the right-of-way impact assessment and guidelines for public consultation strategies are also being recommended through this report. Thank you, that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions?
Thanks, Kirsten, we have two, councillor Collins, councillor Partridge, and myself so far. Thank you, councillor Collins.
Very quickly on the public consultation component, is there a minimum requirement? So there's the requirement to submit a plan?
Yes.
And then as part of the plan that's submitted, if it's not satisfactory in the eyes of staff or council, what's the mechanism that solves a dispute that might arise in terms of, developer submits a large application and says, my consultation plan is to post it on a company website, and it's not advertised, and it really doesn't make its way out and doesn't fulfill the intended requirement, I think, of the legislative changes that have been passed? Is there a minimum requirement? And then second, if we're not satisfied with the plan that's been submitted, what's the municipality's recourse?
Thank you, Kirsten.
Through the chair to the councillor. The guidelines set out a number of, or a list of things that have to be considered through the public consultation strategy, so that also looks at identifying who the target audience is for the application, how we're going to reach them. And then all of that information is submitted to staff as part of the complete application, and staff, like all the other studies that are submitted, we have an opportunity to review and decide if it's not appropriate.
So to be clear then, if they submit something that's not satisfactory in our eyes, we would deem their application then incomplete? Is that how that would follow through if something was submitted that we would deem falling short of what we would expect as part of a public consultation process? I'm trying to understand the worst-case scenario, because we know some, we dealt with one today, where someone has kind of taken a shortcut to skirt public consultation. And so we know what happens, I just wonder what the municipality's recourse is when it does happen in the future, knowing that these changes have now been implemented.
Through the chair to the councillor. So the expectation is that the applicant would follow the guidelines, and because it is new, we would probably be, there's a learning curve, I guess. But there is a line in the strategy, or in the guidelines, I mean, that says all consultations shall follow the guidelines contained in this document. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in a submitted application being deemed incomplete.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Partridge. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and my question, Kirsten, good presentation, thank you. My question is with regards to the exemptions for the road widening. So with the road widening exemptions, who makes that decision?
I'm going to defer to Steve.
Would that be our general manager on staff? Would that come to committee, to council?
Can we refer to Steve? He's got his microphone ready.
Absolutely, absolutely. Mr. Robichaud.
To the board councillor. Normally, the decision to accept either waive or reduce the requirements for a road widening is done through a development application process, and it's usually done by the manager of development planning in consultation with their counterpart in Public Works. And instead, what the purpose of providing that right-of-way impact assessment is, it provides a framework and a criteria for considering and assessing those applications. So it moves from the current process where it seems very ad hoc into a little bit more structured process. And one of the benefits we've had in this delay period is from February, when this was presented to today, Public Works staff have sort of been working with applicants to use that criteria, and it helps sort of say, okay, we've looked at the situation, can we or can we not support either the elimination of the road widening, or a reduced road widening, or a combination of both, and that we're satisfied that these criteria then make sense and can be applied in a logical fashion and provide certainty to applicants. They know what they have to demonstrate, as opposed to what it could appear to be sort of, quote-unquote, "Let's make a deal." So normally, it would be primarily either at a site plan stage is where most of the road widens get raised, and/or at the consent stage, but at least provides an opportunity there to assess the implications of a reduced road widening or eliminating the road widening. And then the manager of development planning, after consulting with Public Works, will decide what, if any, condition to impose at that site plan and/or through the consent process.
Okay, and thank you for that, and that's very similar to a process we actually just went through with an application in my ward with Public Works and planning staff, et cetera, and I thought it worked quite well. So I appreciate that answer, and through you, Madam Chair. Lastly, to Kirsten, with these changes that are coming in, particularly with the exemption for the road widening, will there be any fees required? Will it be strictly consultation, as Mr. Robichaud just laid out?
Through the chair, I'm going to defer to Steve as well.
Through you, Madam Chair. So the road widening requirements under the Planning Act, the municipality can take it either as a condition of consent, condominium, subdivision, or site plan stage. So they've already made an application, so there's no additional fee to the applicant in terms of requesting a reduced road widening. There have been situations where their only other alternative would be to apply for an official plan amendment for a reduced road widening, or to incorporate that into their official plan amendment application. But this is actually just putting a process in that sort of builds upon the existing planning approvals processes, so there is no cost to a proponent to request either a reduced or elimination of a road widening through this process that's being proposed by staff.
Madam Chair, that's huge. Thank you. So it won't be as onerous a process by the sounds of it, and I appreciate the staff's good work on that. Thank you.
Councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Kirsten and Steve, thank you very much, and I appreciate the comments Steve made with regards to the road widening, because I've had a few issues, and I think that's why I brought this forward months ago, where we know roads are never going to be widened, and it's common sense more than anything, and I appreciate staff taking the initiative, saying, "Let's make this work." So I'm happy, and I'm also happy that it's not a charge, that they have to go through a study or some investigative, hire consultants, whatever. So that is excellent. I did want to ask, though, on the public consultation process, appendix D, page one of, actually, page two of three I'm just looking at in the report, Kirsten, I noticed that now, so I'm going to give an example. I have a neighborhood meeting, I've got one coming up on a development. The application has not come here yet, but I'm meeting the neighborhood again, and we're saying now that, I don't think this would meet the timeline, because the application hasn't been filed yet, so it doesn't meet this guideline, but we're saying that minutes of these meetings now have to be taken and recorded, attendances, et cetera. Could you just clarify? So we're basically saying it's a quasi mini-meeting of what we do here. Is that correct?
Through the chair to the councillor, yes, they would be required to take minutes and provide outcomes of the meeting. We would be expecting them to provide information on who's attended the meeting. I believe on page three of that appendix D, if there is a public meeting, there is additional submission requirements on what is required to be submitted, and that includes the address list of the people and organizations invited to the meeting, a copy of the materials presented, the sign-in sheet, minutes of the meeting, a copy of all comments that are received, and a written summary of the comments, and then any description of any modifications to the application as a result of the meeting.
And these minutes and identifiable information, as far as the contacts, addresses, et cetera, follow the same process as we follow here at planning, where only certain information is redacted? I'm not sure if that's correct, or we don't, we take out certain bits of pieces of information? Is that correct?
Through the chair, we would probably have to follow the same requirements. It would be part of their public consultation strategy, but we could look at that further, for sure.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
And councillor Pearson, if you could take the chair, please. Thanks, Kirsten, for the overview. I'm going to center all my questions on the public consultation, because I think it's just so vital. I think it helps both the applicant and the staff and the ward councillor, and more importantly, the public, to be a part of that process, so that if there's something that is so simply resolved just by going to the public, then we're good to go. So to me, it just makes more sense. But I'm really having a struggle here as to what defines public consultation. Some people deem it as, "We just sent letters around to the immediate area." I'll give you an example, that Costco, during the days, you had to send it out 120 meters to the nearest property owner. Well, that meant C N, M T O, and the Q E W. There was no neighbors around, and yet it affected an entire community. So what defines a public consultation?
Through the chair, to the councillor, it's reaching out to the public, so providing an opportunity, a forum for people to provide their input, their support, their objection to an application. So that would be, part of the consultation strategy would be the applicant defining who they are reaching out to, and it would be up to staff to look at that and see if that is an appropriate way to reach those people.
Okay, so it's agreed upon how to reach out to those people. What if the committee or the general working group defines that it doesn't need public consultation? And what incidences, well, as a ward councillor, can I be reassured that even though the staff or the applicant doesn't make it look like it's any impact on the community, the ward councillor differs, and so would the community? So who defines what needs to have a public consultation and what does not?
Through the chair to the councillor, all applications for official plan amendments, zoning bylaw amendment, and plan of subdivision now require that public consultation strategy, so they would be, those applicants would be required to follow these guidelines, to set out that strategy to reach out to the public and get their input.
Okay, thank you. And through you, Chair, can you go back to the slide where it talks about public consultation? Because there's one sentence underneath, there it is. One more, if you can go back one more, I believe. Removal as a requirement. So this is just for the design, or is this the review panel advice? Is this, can you just clarify? Because as soon as I saw removal, I thought, okay, who deems removal?
Through the chair, that is just for the design review panel advice. So previously, in the February report, we were recommending that the design review panel advice be required prior to submission of a complete application, and now we're saying, or now that this report is recommending that that design review panel advice not be required. It's still optional.
Okay.
But it would be reviewed as part of that report that's coming forward later this year on the continuance of the design review panel.
Okay, thank you. And if I go to your appendix D, let me get there. If I go to your appendix, is it D or E that you just?
Appendix D is the public consultation strategy guidelines.
But we also have, sorry, I've lost it. There is a criteria of what happens if there's a community meeting, taking of the minutes, the names and addresses, et cetera, et cetera. Who's responsible for that?
Through the chair to the councillor, that would be the responsibility of the applicant. That would form part of their public consultation strategy submission.
Including the summary of the meeting?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay, so I've been to lots of these before I even got into this position, as you know, and I've often come to a public meeting where the applicant has stood up and said, "Everybody was great with it." And we were all in the audience, we were great with it, we wouldn't be sitting there. So the summary, if you will, is there a requirement that if this is going to a public consultation, that we ask that a staff member be a part of that meeting, so that they can also write in their comments? Because if I'm all for development, I don't often hear the negative parts. I only hear is the positive stuff to reinforce my opinion. So, and it works in complete the opposite as well. So is there a requirement that we have a third-party staff, or a ward councillor, or somebody be a part of this community meeting, just so that they can also write their summary? And if the two summaries don't match up, that tells a tale.
Through the chair, part of the consultation strategy would be identifying proposed participants at the public meeting. From what I've heard in the past, often the applicant does want a staff member to be present at the meeting, and they would have the ability to request a staff member.
But we don't require it?
At this time, I don't believe so, but it is, like I said, these guidelines, we're working through them, so if that's something that you would want to see required, it could be amended.
Okay, so at the appropriate time, I would like to amend it. Either the ward councillor or staff be present so that they, oh, sorry?
Through you, Madam Chair, or through Chairman Deon, just two things. One is, yes, if asked to attend, we will make staff available to attend those meetings. Sometimes staff are deliberately excluded from the invitation, so we don't know that there is a meeting being happening. But where we do know there is a meeting, whether it comes from the applicant, or the ward councillor, or the neighborhood association, then staff would be made, we'll make sure that staff are available to attend. And the second thing is the province, this is fairly new. On July 1st, this requirement took into effect province-wide when the province amended the Planning Act. So one of the things we will be doing is sort of monitoring the situation, the quality of the information we're getting, the types of strategies we're getting. We've only had a handful of applications that have come in since July 1st, and there's sort of a range of what we're seeing on the consultation strategy, from just meeting the requirements of the Planning Act, which is what we do, to other people are saying, no, they're going to be very proactive, they're going to engage the ward councillor, they're going to be engaging the neighborhood associations, and they will be having a more fulsome citizens' engagement strategy, as opposed to just, you know, presenting something. And the intent is working with both their industry partners and the planning consultants. If we have to make revisions with this, after a year, we will report back to committee, if necessary, with any changes to sort of this protocol. The original protocol was put in place, I believe, 2003, I think, or 2007, 2003, a public consultation strategy. And what we've tried to do is formalize some of the best practices coming out of that, and then marrying it with provincial planning act changes. And then after, about a year, 18 months from now, we will report back if there's necessary to revise the strategy, if there are things that aren't working, once we've had an opportunity to see how it works.
Thank you for that, Steve, and it just brought another question on top of the others. So any application that was received by the City of Hamilton prior to July 1st, no matter how large this application is, they are not required to go through a public consultation under these guidelines?
Through you, Madam, through Chairman, that is correct. They would be grandfathered if they were submitted prior to July 1st, and that the Planning Act provisions or the city's official plan provisions would not apply to them. Very often, on those major applications, the more sophisticated developers and the consultants will have that engagement with the community, because it does resolve a lot of the issues through those neighborhood meetings, but there's no statutory provision to require that they do that.
Thank you. And one last question, Kirsten. The applications for 20 stories, O P zoning bylaws clearly state three. So this is a complete, we got to send it to the public, it's just a no-brainer. It goes to the public. Public screams, right, left, and center. We've been following the secondary plan, three stories max, that's all we were told. This is way off base. So that consultation, the minutes from that consultation meeting comes back, the application is revised now to 10 stories. Still outside the box, but it's been revised. Is it at that time we can require another public consultation, because it's still way off base? We always know, hit for the stars, if you get the moon, better than the earth. So this is a typical example I've seen in the times I've been here. So you've got this huge application, goes to public, public screams like crazy, so they revise it, and if it had come in initially, it'd still be deemed huge, but now it looks smaller, because it was huge over here, but now it's smaller. Do we then require another public consultation for the revised application?
Through the chair to the councillor, I think as part of the consultation strategy, they might have to identify how they're going to address the, we did talk about identifying potential issues and how they would be, how they would address them, so that might be one of the ways that they could address potential issues if they know a 20-story building is way out of character for the area, that they might look at seeing what the public has to say about it, and then revising their application and going back out to see if there's support.
Okay, so again, my question is, 20 stories, goes down to 10, still seven stories higher than anybody anticipated, but now it looks like the good guys, you know, I've listened, I've lowered it, when in fact, had that come in initially at 10 stories, we'd be asking for that public consultation on the 10-story. So would we then ask them to go back to the community again and get their comments on the lower level, or the lower density, or even the commercial use, whatever it may be? Would we then require them to go back to the community to discuss the outside-the-box again application?
Through the chair, I think that would be through discussions with the applicant through the process. We are working, like I said, we're working through these guidelines, and we're trying to do the best we can right now. Steve has committed that we would be coming back to say how well they're working, and if there's any tweaking that we need to do. But working with that applicant and knowing what the public is saying, we could request them to go back out to the public.
So we can. We do have that revision, that if you revise the application, we can still ask you to go back to the community if it still needs an O P or a zoning.
Through the chair, this would be as, the application would already be in, so they would be making that revision. In order to get the public onside and getting their input would be beneficial for them before bringing it before committee. So I would think that working with the developer and staff, it would be something that we would be recommending.
Okay, so it's not something that is in stone, it's not something that's a requirement. We're saying we'll work with them, but at the same time, legally and with our bylaws, it's not a requirement of them to go back to the community for a revised application that is still outside the box.
Through you, Madam Chairman. Once the application is being deemed complete, we do notify all property owners and neighborhood associations within 120 meters of the complete application, and provide a description of what that application is about. If the application is, so once we receive an application, assuming it's a 10-story application, they went 20, they had a pre-submission consultation, they decide to amend it to 10. That 10-story application is what we would notify all the property owners within 120 meters on, and even if they went from 10 to 5, and it was a substantial amendment to the application, on an amended application, we would go back to the community and give them notice that there is an amended application. At that time, there would be the opportunity for either, we're working with the ward councillor and the proponent to decide if a neighborhood information meeting should be held prior to it coming to planning committee, but once an application is being deemed complete, then the opportunities for the municipality to require sort of additional requirements on the applicant, they sort of get waived, we don't have that sort of tool. That's one of the changes that we had asked the province to amend the Planning Act, but we weren't successful in having that sort of an amended application and resetting the clock for all purposes.
Okay, so this is going to be a learning curve, as Kirsten says, so as we go through these one by one, I really think that also in the requirement is that the ward councillor be put on notice immediately, because that ward councillor knows those communities better than anyone. So it would then be, yes, we still need another community meeting, yes, we still need another public consultation to come back with a revised application, because it's still not within the O P A, or still not within our O P rules, it's still not within our zoning or our secondary plans. So that's my comments for now. I'll take the chair back. Councillor Conley?
Thank you. I hate to go back to the road widening or narrowing, but I know we had a representative here a few months ago talking about narrower streets, and I want to make sure, like, because the developers will go to the narrower street they can get. Is this going to be something that every application now, they're going to try to get the roads narrower, so that they can get whatever, more houses on or whatever? Because we have some standards now, and I think they're not bad. We narrow the roads, any one inch more than they are, we're going to, we have problems now with the road sizes, so I'm hoping that this isn't a way of the developers getting narrow, narrow, or, I can't say that word, narrow.
Narrow. Less wide.
Less wide.
Less wide.
Streets as a loophole.
Jason?
Through the chair.
So through the chair, I think the council's referring to the comprehensive engineering guidelines that were brought forward a few months back to council. This change does not affect those engineering guidelines, those remain the city's standards in terms of road rights of way in different contexts, so this does not change those engineering standards.
Thank you, councillor.
And these public meetings, I know I've been to a few public meetings that the developer has actually called, and I really appreciate them, but I've never seen a staff has actually called, and I really appreciate them, but I've never seen a staff there. So I guess it's my fault, I probably didn't ask you to be there. But I think it's a great idea that they have to have a public meeting, that the ward counselor has to be notified and that staff, some staff will be there because there's a lot of questions that maybe we don't have, that staff might be able to ask or that we can ask and kind of nip it in the butt upfront rather than getting it too far and going through all the applications and try to resolve it. So I'm really in support of the public consultation that has to be done now. It's not optional. Right now, it's optional. And it's good that this won't be... Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Just a question for... I'm going to turn the chair over just for a second. If we... Do we require with the zoning bylaw that public consultation need to include staff and ward counselors, please? So do we need that amendment into the bylaw to ensure that that's all neat and tidy?
Through the chair, I just wanted... Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I wanted to point out that for a meeting, that the applicant is required to send invitations to the city manager of development, planning, heritage, and design, the ward counselor, and all property owners, neighborhood associations, and business improvement area associations, identify stakeholders within 120 meters of the property unless an alternate radius is agreed to by the city and the applicant. So that also, that can extend the area as well. So like you said with your example, we would probably look at an alternate radius for that situation. That would have a lot more property owners that might be affected by that development.
So in your opinion, that doesn't need to be specifically included into the bylaw? In your opinion, it's already included in the bylaw?
Yes, sorry, through the chair. Also, it says input may be solicited from the ward counselor and that the invitations must be sent a minimum of 10 days prior to the meeting so that there is time for the recipients of the invitation to be notified of the meeting and plan to attend.
Okay, at this point, I'll be prepared to sit back and watch, but it's going to... It may end up being a huge amendment at the end of this because it's like you said, it's baby steps, it's learning curve, and let's see how the process rolls out. It could be all this, you know, my concerns could be for nothing, or it could be exactly coming to fruition. So I'll be prepared to sit back and wait. Thank you. So I'll take the chair back. Counselor Ferguson, you are... Welcome to the committee.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you for allowing me to speak to this issue. Some of us in suburban areas do our public consultation through something we call community councils. And it was very effective in my ward because they're not necessarily neighbors, they're not appointed by me, they're appointed by other agencies throughout the municipality. If, under this program, if the ward council asks for the matter to be presented to the community council, can the applicant deny doing that or will they be compelled to do it?
Through the chair, the public consultation strategy would have to identify any affected stakeholders or community groups, and that would identify your community council. And they would want to work with, within those means, to provide a fulsome consultation.
So the developer, if I have a private question, as the ward counselor, do a presentation along with city staff, which we regularly do with the community council, can they tell me to go pound salt or they have to do it?
Because we all like to.
Through the chair, they would want to craft their community consultation strategy to reach out to the most people. So we would identify that within your ward or within an area of your ward, there's a community council and that they should maybe be consulting with those people.
Okay, let me narrow the question. Don't even narrow then. Can they tell me no?
Through the chair, the consultation strategy is crafted by the applicant. So they can put whatever they want in there, but if we deem it not appropriate, then they might have to go back and revise it. So knowing that you have a community council and they say we don't want to consult with them, that might be deemed inappropriate or incomplete.
Okay, so the answer is maybe.
Maybe. Because this is not tested yet, I can't really answer that question. We haven't received a public consultation strategy. So this is what we've tried to cover off of all the different ways that could be used for consulting with the public. And as we go forward, we may be tweaking it.
Okay, I'm not a member of the committees, you know, Madam Chair, but that concerns me a bit that they don't have enough. So far, every applicant's been very prepared to do it. So like you, maybe we should take a watch-see thing. But if it's controversial and they say, no, we're not coming to your community council, I don't know what staff would do. Would they say you must or would they say you don't have to? Maybe that's a question to the director, to Steve, if I can, one last time, then I'll be quiet.
Through you, Madam Chairman, I think the risk you take is, I mean, we've had the situation, we've contemplated this even with design review panel, where we ask them to go and consult or solicit advice from those advisory bodies, and the proponents simply refuse to do that. Talking to my colleagues in other jurisdictions, other municipalities, they just go ahead and schedule the item on that agenda, staff attend, you know, the ward counselor, the body meets, and if the proponent decides not to show up, then that's at their risk. So that would be the suggestion, how you deal around that situation where you invite somebody to attend and they're non-committal or they refuse to attend, we still would proceed with having that consultation in the absence of the applicant attending or the proponent attending, and then we would actually then generate the report on the basis of that consultation. Like Ms. McCully indicated, this is sort of lays out the minimum requirements as to what a consultation strategy should have. We would strongly encourage proponents to meet or exceed the minimum requirements, but they do have that opportunity if they simply refuse or they come back with just a very bare-bones thing to say, this is all I'm going to do. And then we would have to be in that situation of saying, no, we want to see you do better, basically take a failing paper and at least try to get it to a C or a B-minus grade.
Okay, so I take from your comments, and Steve, we don't need an amendment to make a mandatory, then you think it will self-check itself?
Through you, Madam Chairman, that is correct at this point.
Okay, counsel? All right. We're ready to go. Any other questions? Seeing none, I just need a motion, please, to receive the presentation. Counselor Pasuda, Counselor Skelly, all those in favor? Thank you. And I'd like to call down Suzanne from the Hamilton-Holton Home Builders Association.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. This is a follow-up to my presentation to you in February of this year on this matter. Firstly, I want to say that I'm appreciative of the time you've afforded DILG and the Hamilton-Holton Home Builders to work with staff on a variety of these issues. As you will recall, the first issue is the road widening issue, and we did not have an issue with that at the outset. Our position has not remained unchanged, and we're very supportive of that initiative. The second issue that we discussed at that time was the design review panel, and we are pleased to see that staff is now supportive of our recommendation at that time, which was that this be deferred until the end of the pilot period. And so we are supportive of that issue. With respect to the community consultation, our position at the time had been that we weren't supportive of the timeline of the community consultation, and we are pleased to see that staff has made a change in that regard. However, having said that, the community consultation guideline, which a lot of the questions today have revolved around, we were not in a position to review that, we did not receive it for review, so a lot of our members have not had an opportunity to see it, nor have we talked to staff about it. It's not that I'm not supportive of it. In fact, I'm very supportive of a guideline prepared for community consultation, and a lot of the work that's in it is very good. However, there are some concerns and questions, and in the emails that I've referred to that I had with Steve Robichaud yesterday, he said he is prepared to work with us at the next DILG to go through that because our membership has not had the opportunity. And as you all have, or many of you have suggested, there are some tweaking that can be done. I would point out that a lot of our members are very supportive of staff being in attendance at these meetings. I think there is wording in the document that does speak to that and that the proponent is able to ask for staff to be there. I think that for a whole host of reasons, that is important, and so that is covered off. But I would ask that our group be afforded the opportunity to go through some details, just some small ambiguities and some wording that I think can be tweaked to make this better for everyone. So that is really my request of this, but otherwise, I'm supportive of this revised.
Thank you, Suzanne. Can I please... Any questions? Seeing none, receiving, please. Counselor Green, Counselor Conley, all those in favor. Thanks, Suzanne. Okay, so now we need a motion respecting 8.3. Thank you, Counselor Green.
I just... So with it being removed as a requirement through you to Jason, will this... Could this result in poorer quality of design? Without having the review, could it be the case now that we have kind of substandard, run-of-the-mill, highest profit margin, lowest, maybe a community appeal? Are we removing this check and balance as a requirement?
So through the chair, I think the counsel is speaking about the DRP advice section on this slide.
Right.
Basically, what's being suggested here is the continuation of the status quo. So right now, we can request, staff can request that certain applications go before the design review panel. By and large, that has been successful. Most applicants have agreed to do that, and so that would continue to be the case. Where it says that removed as a requirement, it was proposed to make it a requirement in the earlier version of this report. That would have been a new requirement that doesn't exist today. What we're suggesting is that we don't make that step yet because we are scheduled at the end of this year to come back to council with a review of the DRP process overall with a number of probably suggested changes, improvements to that process. Those changes at that time may include certain cases where it would be required, but we aren't suggesting that happen yet. That would wait until we do a full review of the entire DRP process. So as a result, what would happen as of today is a continuation of the status quo where we request certain applications go to the DRP. And like I said, for the most part, that's been successful. We have applicants who've been willing to do that.
Fair enough. That satisfies. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pearson, your hand was up, so I'm assuming it's to move it or to comment. Counselor Partridge, second that? Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Thank you, staff. Now we're on to 8.4. I'm just going to have Counselor Pearson.
Okay, item 8.4 is coordinated provincial plan review, growth plan for the greater golden horseshoe, green belt plan, Niagara scarpet plan, city of Hamilton comments on May 2016 draft plan, PED 15078B, citywide. And I'm just going to read off, before we hear the delegations for item 8.4, I'm going to ask committee, do you first wish to see the staff presentation? Everybody's supportive of seeing staff presentation on this? Maybe a refresher?
Yes.
Yes? Thank you. We'll go ahead then. I'm going to call Heather Travis down to the podium. Good morning, Heather. Still morning. Thank you.
My presentation today will provide an overview of the city's response on the second phase of the coordinated provincial plan review. So in terms of just a brief overview, today's presentation will first provide a brief background on the coordinated review process, that being the review of the provincial growth plan, the green belt plan, and the Niagara scarpet plan, and how we got to where we are today. I'll highlight some of the key changes to the three plans, just very briefly, and provide an overview of the changes that are supported by staff. Next, I'll go over some of the staff's key concerns and recommendations in relation to the proposed changes. I'll also highlight some of the city's previous recommendations, which have not been addressed in the revised plans. The presentation will conclude with an overview of the proposed green belt mapping and boundary changes put forward by the province and how these relate to the changes that had been requested by the city. So in terms of background, the coordinated plan review began in February 2015 with a provincial announcement of the plan review process, including the three plans that are applicable to Hamilton, being the growth plan, green belt plan, and Niagara scarpet plan. In June 2015, the city provided formal comments to the province on the review of the three plans. This followed a lengthy public engagement process where the city hosted public consultation events to gain public input into the process. Additional comments were provided from the city on the green belt and Niagara scarpet plan boundary changes in December of 2015, following additional public input. In May 2016, the province released revised plans for comment. The deadline for comments batch, the province has recently been extended to October 31st of this year. So before I get into review of the proposed changes, I'd like to note that the presentation is just a summary of what's being changed. The report before you contains eight pages of recommendations. The recommendations in the report are very detailed and technical because that's what was requested by the province. I'm only going to address some of the key changes and recommendations today, but I'd be pleased to answer questions on any of the other recommendations following the presentation. So in terms of the proposed changes, consistency and linkages between the plans has been improved as we had requested. There is a greater recognition that the plans work together to guide growth and protect agriculture and the environment. Definitions have also been standardized between all plans, which improves clarity and consistency in interpretation. There's also a new emphasis on climate change in all plans. Low-impact development and green infrastructure is heavily encouraged, and there's an overall direction to integrate climate change considerations into all aspects of land use planning. While staff are generally supportive of these directions, we have made a recommendation that the province should provide additional direction with respect to how these policies can be implemented at the local level because there's not a lot of direction being provided right now. Moving on to the changes to the growth plan. Within the growth plan, there's a newly defined term of prime employment areas. These are employment areas such as business parks, which contain low-density employment uses such as warehousing and manufacturing. They're located in the vicinity of major highways or good movement facilities such as the airport or the harbor. Residential and institutional uses are prohibited in these areas. Staff have reviewed the city's employment areas as identified in our official plan, and we find that all of the city's employment lands could be classified as prime employment areas. We're generally supportive of this newly defined term as the city's previous recommendations to the province had included a request to prohibit institutional uses within employment areas, and this is now being proposed. There's also a significant focus on transit within the growth plan. Major transit station areas are those areas that surround higher-order transit stops and stations such as LRT or GO stations. There's a new requirement for higher densities within these areas, which I'll discuss further as a concern in the next section. One of the proposed changes to the growth plan that has received a lot of attention is the change to the intensification and density targets within the plan. The intensification target is proposed to increase from 40% to 60%. This means that 60% of new residential development must be within the built-up area. In terms of greenfield development, the density target has been increased from 50 persons and jobs per hectare to 80, meaning that the minimum density across the city's greenfield area shall be planned to achieve a minimum density of 80 persons and jobs per hectare. We have significant concerns about these increased targets, which I'll cover in greater detail in the next section. It should also be noted that there's a proposed change in how the greenfield density is calculated, which is meant to somewhat offset the increased density requirement. The province has added additional features that can be exempted from the density requirement. Previously, it was just natural heritage features because those are generally undevelopable. They've added the prime employment areas that I just mentioned, as well as some corridors, et cetera. We're supportive of this, these additional exemptions, as it will assist the city and be able to meet those increased targets. But again, I'll go over the targets in a bit more detail in the next section. In terms of changes to the green belt plan, I can go over these fairly quickly as the changes to the green belt plan are fairly minor. The province has introduced a new term, agricultural support network. This is part of the agricultural system and includes elements to support the viability of the agri-food sector, including infrastructure, transportation, and processing facilities. Municipalities are encouraged to develop strategies to support the agri-food sector and consider and support the agricultural support network in all planning decisions. There is a greater policy direction regarding rural settlement areas, including a direction to encourage the development of community hubs in RSAs. And the province has also added a new term, key hydrologic areas, which is an extension of the water resource system. These are areas that contain significant groundwater and surface These are areas that contain significant groundwater and surface water areas, and highly vulnerable aquifers. The policies will require these areas to be mapped and identified in the official plan, and certain types of development will be restricted or require further study to proceed. This will be a significant mapping exercise for the city to undertake, and staff are concerned about potential impact on agricultural operations and are recommending an exemption for agricultural buildings in this regard. So that was, as I mentioned, a very brief, high-level overview of the proposed changes. There's a lot more detail in the report, so if there's any questions on any of that, we can discuss that afterward. What I did want to note is that, in terms of the revised plans, overall, staff are supportive of many of the proposed changes. The province has responded to many of the city's previous recommendations, and made appropriate revisions. Some of the areas that the province has made changes, as requested by the staff, are noted on this slide. I've already mentioned quite a few of them. The consistency and the linkages and the consistent definitions is positive. The restriction on institutional uses in the employment areas. There's a new concept of strategic growth areas, which are to be the focus for intensification, and the city had requested that that be acknowledged in the growth plan, that intensification is not appropriate throughout the built-up area, but should be focused in certain areas. We support the concept of the agricultural support network, and the additional direction on our rural settlement areas. The emphasis on low-impact development and energy planning. And the link between public health and land use planning has been greatly strengthened, and that was also requested by the city in the previous round of consultation. So, now moving into, I guess, the heart of the matter. This is the city's key concerns and recommendations. So as I mentioned, there's a large number of recommendations in the report in front of you. I'm just gonna go over a few today. These are some of the ones that are most significant in staff's eyes. So one of the primary areas of concern relates to the increase in intensification and density targets that I mentioned earlier. Before we get into the numbers, just in terms of the built boundary and what that means. The map on the screen identifies the built boundary, which is defined by the province within the City of Hamilton area. The lands in red are considered to be within the built boundary or within the built-up area. This is intended to reflect the limits of the developed urban area. The lands in white are the urban lands outside of the built boundary, and this is referred to as the greenfield area. The built boundary line that you see on the slide here was established by the province in 2006, during the initial implementation of the growth plan. Some of the areas that are shown as being greenfield areas, or white, and being outside of the built boundary, have actually been developed now since 2006. It's staff's opinion that the built boundary line should be modified to reflect the updated conditions of today, but the province has indicated that this will not happen. The reason this is critical is because, as I mentioned, the revised growth plan is increasing the intensification rate from 40% to 60%. This means that 60% of all new residential development must take place within the built boundary, or the red area on the slide. If the built boundary line was extended to include some of the greenfield areas that have been developed since 2006, this would be a benefit to the city in meeting this increased target, as there'd be additional land area available to accommodate the required intensification. So specifically, with regard to the intensification target, and what this actually means for Hamilton, as I mentioned, the revised plan increases the target from 40% to 60%, meaning that 60% of new residential units must be within that red area or within the built boundary. So what does this mean for Hamilton? To get a better understanding of what this means, I've shown on the slide the intensification numbers that we are currently achieving. So as you can see, I'm not sure if this is working. No, I'm sorry, this isn't working, but in 2015, we just met the 40% intensification target. We were at 42%. In previous years, we'd been close, but we hadn't quite met the 40%. So now the province wants to increase this to 60%. So put another way, to have achieved 60% over these past three years that are shown on the slide, we would have needed approximately 500 additional units to be developed within the built boundary each year for the last three years. To put in perspective, the redevelopment of the federal building across the street, which is a 12-story building, contains about 150 units. So we would have needed four more developments of that size each year for the past three years to meet this increased target. And historically, we just haven't seen that type of redevelopment within our built-up area. What this means is that in order for the city to meet our growth forecasts, which the province has provided to the year 2041, we know how many people and jobs they say we will have in the city to that year, the majority of the development in built-up area will need to be in the form of apartments. That's the only way that we can meet the target. We know that the supply of apartments will therefore exceed the demand for this type of housing, leaving us with an oversupply of apartments in the built-up area to meet the target. Looking then at the greenfield density target. As I mentioned, the revised plan increases the target from 50 persons and jobs per hectare to 80. In terms of where we are right now, our current greenfield density, which is measured across the greenfield area, is approximately 57 persons and jobs per hectare. And this is based on the newly proposed method of calculating greenfield density, where we have those additional exemptions, such as our employment areas and some transportation corridors. So this is taking advantage of that offset that the province has incorporated into the revised plan. Even with those offsets, we're still only at 57 currently. So it's important to note that the 80 persons and jobs per hectare, which is the target, is measured across the entire greenfield area. So the average density across the city's greenfield areas must be 80 persons and jobs per hectare. Why this is important is because future growth areas are going to need to develop at a density much greater than 80 in order to compensate for the existing lower-density greenfield areas. We estimate the required density in new areas could actually be 100 persons and jobs per hectare or greater, to average out to the required 80 across the greenfield area. So when thinking about these numbers, it's important to note that 80 persons and jobs per hectare isn't really going to be 80 in new growth areas. It will actually be much higher. As a comparative perspective, the council-approved Fruitland Winona Secondary Plan was approved at a density of 70 persons and jobs per hectare. So future plans will need to be much greater. So what do these changes really mean for Hamilton and for residents of the city? It's clear that the increases to the intensification and density targets will result in significantly denser development than what we're currently seeing, and this can have several potential impacts. This may have an impact on housing affordability and reduced homeownership options. Housing demand for single-detached dwellings is high, but the supply may not be there to meet the demand, as higher-density development will be required to meet the increased targets. Financially, there will be a cost to the city in providing services, transit, and infrastructure to service the higher-density greenfield communities. And further, there will be financial implications for the city and the city's development charge bylaw and cost recovery in that regard. These potential implications result in the need for the province to assist municipalities with long-term funding models and strategies to provide these services. Municipalities cannot do it on their own, and this is one of the key recommendations that we are making in our staff report and putting forward to the province, as I've noted on this slide. Further, and in terms of the increased targets, we're also recommending to the province that the city is not currently in a position to support the increase in the intensification target and the increase in the greenfield density target, until such time as the province fully evaluates the impact of these changes on the city's housing mix and demand. We understand that there are merits to intensification and increased density, and that this is consistent, in general, with the city's, the growth pattern that we've outlined in our official plan, to direct growth to nodes and corridors. However, what we're seeing is that the potential impacts of these changes have not been fully evaluated by either the city or the province, and until we can evaluate the impacts on the city's ability to meet our growth targets and ensure an appropriate mix of housing, we're not in a position to support the proposed target increases. However, we've also provided some recommendations to the province in the event that the province does move forward with the proposed changes to the targets. These specific recommendations, if followed, would assist the city with implementing the increases that are being proposed. I've mentioned these briefly already in some regard, but we're recommending that, number one, the rebuilt boundary line be revised to include the developed greenfield areas within the built-up area. We feel that the increase in the minimum greenfield density target shall not apply to greenfield areas which have already been developed, or to undeveloped land in an approved secondary plan. And this would assist the city with meeting the increased target, because we wouldn't be having to factor in those lower-density approvals. Because it is an average, the lower-density approvals really require new development to be developed at a much higher density. And we're recommending that cemeteries, landfills, infrastructure, and public parks be added to the features, in addition to the employment areas, which the province has already taken out, be added to the features to be excluded from the greenfield density calculation. Because once again, the more features that we can exempt, the easier it will be for the city to meet our targets. And generally, these areas that are listed in number three there represent areas that cannot be developed anyway, so they shouldn't be included for the purposes of calculating density. The other significant area of concern that staff have identified with regard to the revised plans is the increased density target surrounding major transit station areas. I mentioned the major transit station areas briefly. These are areas that are stops and stations for higher-order transit, so LRT and GO stations. They're defined in the growth plan as being the area within 500 meters of a transit station or a stop. And the growth plan has a new policy to require a minimum density of 160 persons or jobs per hect, persons and jobs per hectare within 500 meters of an LRT or bus rapid transit, and 150 within 500 meters of a GO station. And this is a new policy that's been added. So again, trying to put it into perspective of what these numbers actually mean, we've used the proposed Ottawa Street LRT stop as an example. So this is 500 meters from the proposed LRT stop. This would be considered a major transit station area under the revised growth plan. The map identifies the proposed stop in the 500-meter radius in red. Currently, within this area, we have a population of about 4,400 people in 1,800 units and 830 jobs. So the current persons and jobs per hectare in this area is 67. The growth plan will require us to achieve 160 persons and jobs per hectare. This will require the population to double within this area, or an additional 2,500 apartment units, and the employment would need to increase by four times. Staff feel that a change to the level of density would have an impact on the character of the area. Staff are concerned that this level of density may be appropriate at some station stops, such as the downtown, but not all. As such, we're proposing recommendations to the province, noted here on the slide, which will give municipalities the flexibility to identify the limits of major transit station areas, which in some cases may be less than the 500 meters currently proposed. We recognize that increased density around transit stations and stops is important. We're simply recommending that the city be given the flexibility to identify where this level of density is appropriate. We also have identified concerns related to implementation. This is covered off in fairly great detail in the report, so in the interest of time, I'm not gonna focus on it here. These concerns relate primarily to matters of timing, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions in this regard after the presentation. But again, in the interest of timing, I'll just skip over this for now. Finally, and before we move on to the mapping and the boundary changes, the city did provide a significant number of recommendations to the province in June of 2015 on the first phase of the coordinated review. Some of the recommendations, as I mentioned, have been carried forward in the revised plans, while others have not. We're reaffirming all of the recommendations that we previously made in regard to the first phase that have not been implemented. Some of the key ones I've listed here on the side, we recommend that the province provide a reduced minimum lot size to 20 hectares for prime agricultural areas in the green belt plan. We recommend broadening the rural area policies in the green belt plan to consider existing highway, commercial, and industrial uses in the rural area. We recommend flexibility for vegetation protection zones. Again, that's a green belt plan requirement. And again, some additional definitions that we had previously requested be added to the plans and identification of local transit lines. Those are just a few of the key ones. Again, the report has a number of other recommendations that we had previously made that have not been carried forward, and we would like to stress that all of our previous recommendations do still stand. All right, so now, moving on to the mapping changes, or the boundary changes. As you recall, in December of 2015, the city provided fairly detailed recommendations on green belt and Niagara scarpment plan boundary changes. Regarding removal of land from the green belt plan, the city recommended lands in Lower Stony Creek, which is shown on the top map on the slide, and lands in Waterdown, north of Parkside and east of Center Road, shown on the bottom map, to be removed from the green belt plan boundary. The province has released draft revised green belt mapping. In terms of removals, the province has proposed to remove only the portions of Lower Stony Creek that are shown in the red hatching on this plan. And these parcels are already part of the city's urban boundary, and these represent technical removals only. The larger parcels in Lower Stony Creek and the parcels in Waterdown, which the city had requested for removal, have not been proposed removal by the province. In terms of proposed additions to the green belt plan, the city requested that the province add lands in the vicinity of Nieba Road, between Trinity Church and Miles, as shown on the map, to the green belt plan, and that the Cold Water Creek Urban River Valley also be added to the plan. In terms of the response, the province has proposed to add lands in the vicinity of Nieba Road, as had been requested by the city. However, the portion proposed for addition by the province is shown in red on this plan. It doesn't extend to Miles Road, as had been requested by the city, but it does include the other lands. So the city's request is in blue, and the provincial response is in red. The province has also proposed to add lands in the area of Book Road, which is shown as area number four on this plan. And the city did not request that these lands be added. And finally, the province has proposed to add the 50 Creek Urban River Valley, which was not requested by the city. So in terms of our overall recommendation on the green belt boundary changes, it has not changed from our recommendations sent to the province in December of 2015. We are reaffirming our recommendation that the province add the lands in the Nieba Road area, extended westward to Miles Road, and also add the Cold Water Creek Urban River Valley. And finally, we're reaffirming our recommendation to remove the lands in Lower Stony Creek and the lands north of Parkside Drive and Waterdown that we had previously identified. With regards to Niagara scarpment plan boundary changes, the province has not announced any proposed mapping or boundary revisions to date regarding the Niagara scarpment plan. These are still under review. So today, we are simply reaffirming our previous requests that the city had put forward. The properties are identified on the side. We had requested that lands on Jerseyville Road in Anncaster and lands on York Road and Olympic Drive be re-designated to urban in the Niagara scarpment plan, so we are reaffirming this recommendation to the province. And finally, the province has also received a number of requests from private landowners through the coordinated review process to have their lands re-designated in the Niagara scarpment plan. And some of these lands are in Hamilton. So once again, the province has not released any proposed changes regarding the NEP mapping to date, but the city does still have an opportunity to comment on all these proposals put forward by private individuals. So I'm gonna just go through these very quickly and identify staff's position with regard to each of these requests, but the decision will ultimately rest with the province. The first, as you can see, is 658 Highway 8 in Stony Creek. The property owner has requested to re-designate the portion, or the sliver shown in red, to urban area to permit the development of a residential subdivision. The lands are outside of the city's urban boundary and designated specialty crop in the rural official plan, and staff do not support that request. 1100 Mohawk Road is the Mohawk Sports Park, and there's been a request from a group of individuals to have the lands removed from the urban designation in the Niagara scarpment plan and added to the urban river valley designation in the green belt plan. The lands are designated open space in the urban official plan. Staff find that the park serves the urban area, and the current designation is appropriate, and do not support this request. 1105 Lower Lions Club Road on the bottom in Anncaster, this is a request from McMaster University, who is a property owner, to permit a 5,000-square-foot educational facility on these lands. The lands are currently designated open space and rural in the rural official plan. The lands are currently designated open space and rural in the rural official plan, and an official plan amendment would be required to permit such a use. Staff find there's insufficient information provided at this time to support this request, and therefore currently are not in support. The next is five parcels in Waterdown between Dundas Street and Parkside Drive. There's requests from these five property owners to have their lands re-designated from escarpment rural to urban area. The owners wish to have the lands included in the urban boundary. The lands are outside of the urban boundary currently and are designated rural in the official plan, and therefore staff do not support this request. The bottom one is 1375 Stone Church Road East, which is a request from the Hamilton Conservation Authority, being the property owner, to designate the portion shown in red from escarpment protection to urban area to permit the severance of an existing building. These lands are designated open space in the urban official plan. Staff do not have a concern with this request, but it would be subject to an environmental impact statement and the appropriate planning approvals. And finally, 42 Spring Hill Street is a property in the Greensville Rural Settlement area. There's a request in the property owner to re-designate from escarpment natural to escarpment rural. The lands currently contain two dwellings, including one house on the heritage inventory. They're designated settlement residential in the Greensville Settlementary Plan, and staff would therefore have no concerns with this request. So just to finish up, in terms of next steps, the city's comments will be forwarded to the province following next week's council meeting. The formal commenting deadline to the province has recently been extended to October 31st of 2016, and the province has indicated that the revised plans will be released in 2017, early 2017.
Thank you, Heather. And we have some questions, please. Counselor Collins.
Thanks, and my main concern, very good presentation and report. My main concern through all of this is the intensification and density targets, because the domino effect there for certain areas of the city could be quite severe, and I think you've given a good explanation and example with the Ottawa Street scenario and the densities that would come with that. In terms of what's listed in the report and what you've recommended, we're suggesting that we are not supportive of the 60% target, knowing that we just passed the 40% target, which is the current target. Would it make sense for us to counter with something that's more realistic? Just off the cuff, suggesting maybe 45% instead of sticking with the 40, to suggest that we're willing to accommodate growth, but, you know, lumping us into the 60% category, in my mind, the consequences of the province approving that is that we're going to end up with applications coming forward that don't fit the character of the area, that are far too intense for the existing or surrounding community. We oftentimes see pushback with higher densities, and so to push it even further, and those comments will be reflected, Madam Chairman, when the reports come back, but when we end up going to the OMB because we can't support it based on those points that you've made, the OMB is going to rule in favor of the developer because the targets are so high, and the applicant will say to the province, "I'm just meeting the targets that have been established in this area by the province," and the province is, and by extension, the OMB, is going to approve those applications. And so, and I can kind of see where this is going, but would, does it make sense for us to live with incremental changes because it's pretty close to what we're experiencing in a very hot market, which could change next year or the year after if, in fact, the market slows?
The language that we used in the report was chosen specifically to state that we're currently, we're not in a position to support the increase in the targets until such time as the province has evaluated the impact, and the city has also had a chance to fully evaluate the impacts. Because what we're really saying is, right now, we don't know fully what those impacts are going to be. We've tried to predict ahead, we've tried to look forward and say, you know, what are our communities going to look like at the 60 and at the 80, but we really don't know at this time. This has kind of just come down the pipe very, very quickly, and we haven't had a lot of chance to fully evaluate and respond. So we've tried to choose our language carefully to say that, right now, we're not in a position to support, that, once we've had that chance to evaluate and look at what this means, I think you're right, there might be another number that is suitable, but we just don't know what that is right now.
Thank you, Counselor.
Based on, Madam Chairman, based on the current trends, do we expect anything different than something in the low to mid 40s? I mean, you've provided the last two years, which were just in the high 30s. I'm sure if you go back, you're going to see lower numbers, but two to three, maybe percentage points, and I'm, I don't have that information here, but just based on what you've shown us, there's a trend.
Yep.
The trend is slightly up a couple of percentage points, and it's going in the right direction. You know, I'm not sure what a study would glean from that in terms of looking backward at the past trends and numbers and looking forward at what's to come, you know? And these plans are updated every number of years.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I don't know what else we'd find as part of an in-depth study, other than something maybe at what we're at right now, or a little bit better, or worse, depending on a bad market.
Through the chair, you're right, it's incrementally, it's positive, and I think that's generally what we expect to see. The city is always embarking very shortly on our municipal comprehensive review, and then the update to our growth strategy, which we call Grids 2, and that's really going to outline for us where our growth is going to occur, and how, and where we're going to meet these targets, or the population and employment forecasts that the province has already given us to 2041. So we do have a lot of work to do in those regards of these more comprehensive studies that's going to tell us how and where we're going to grow, and that we really feel like right now, we just can't, I don't think we're comfortable putting a number out there, because we're not sure exactly what that number would be.
Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, those are my questions for now. I do have grave concerns.
Microphone.
What are the implications on a go-forward basis? I mean, I don't, you know, this will make its way maybe into the newspaper or local media, and there'll be a small article, but it's not until, you know, this is passed and three or four years from now, applications start coming in to reflect the new numbers, that we're going to have lineups in full galleries here, people, you know, asking, "Why is the city entertaining, you know, an apartment building of 15 stories when, under our current plan, maybe it's a six-to-eight-story structure or something smaller?" And, you know, we'll point to this, these changes that have been made, and at that point, it's, I mean, it really doesn't mean much, so. Anyway, thanks for the presentation, a very good one, and great information in the report.
Thank you. Counselor Pearson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly echo the previous speaker's comments, that this is a huge change coming, huge change. We think we have problems with intensification now, and, you know, I support intensification as long as it's balanced, but this will be a very big mind shift for residents and developers of everyone. I just want to touch on, though, Heather, I want to go back to the Green Belt boundary changes and the two issues that we had with the Stony Creek lands, Highway Number 8 and Barton. And just wanting to verify on the mapping you provided, so you've got what we sent in, and I'm sorry the slide pages aren't numbered, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so there, then you flip to the next one, but it looks like the province has changed something. If I'm reading this right, the red, the little pink box is what the province is proposing? If you overlay this mapping on our, on what was sent in originally, is there not a change? I'm seeing a change, I just want to be sure I'm seeing this right.
So there is some overlap, you're correct, to what the province has agreed to remove versus what the city requested, but the portions here that are shown as being removed represent areas that are already part of our boundary, are already part of the Fruitland and Ona Secondary Plan. So they were just a small portion of what the city put forward for recommendation, because it's something that should have already been removed some time ago. The additional lands, for instance, I'm sorry, the pointer's not working, but, you know, these areas here?
Correct.
We've recommended that all be removed, and that is showing us still, that's just one example, is showing us still being included in the plan.
Okay, so there, so it's actually...
Yeah, so here, for instance, we had wanted that to be removed. That is not proposed removal. It's only those small little chunks, and then this larger chunk here, but those are already urban, should have been removed some time ago.
Right, and then the, okay, I just wanted to clarify. Then the other slide, you mentioned the slide of, that's the NEC, and I take it that was, it's got a Highway 8 address, but it's actually Fruitland, actually Regal View, the little strip at the top, right there, that staff don't support, and the NEC does not support removal of that little strip of land, which is actually the east side fronting on Regal View, which is fully serviced. All those lots along there were fully serviced way back when, and it's still the position of NEC that that not change?
Actually, the NEC hasn't, or the ministry has not provided a recommendation in that regard to date. They haven't released any proposed revisions to the Niagara Skartment Plan boundary changes, only the Green Belt Plan. So these, to staff's knowledge, are just still under review by the ministry.
Okay.
And they haven't made a decision.
But our comments stand by that we don't want it removed, is that what staff are saying?
That's correct, because currently, it's specialty crop in the rural official plan.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I soft down, and then I'll go to Counselor Ferguson. If you can just stay on that slide for just a second. My understanding is that staff's not supportive of taking that out, regardless whether it's serviced or not, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, that's correct.
Okay, so for my colleague's information, for everybody's information, Regal View is actually an extension of Fruitland Road, then the next road over is Jones, the next one over from there is Glover, then there's Lewis and McNeely, and then Winona, and I've mixed up a few of them, sorry. And all these roads end at the escarpment, except for McNeely and 50, all those roads are serviced. They were all serviced back in the early 70s, from what I understand. So my concern for this piece of land coming out, all the residents that live on Jones and on Glover and on McNeely, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, who have also been discouraged by being in the Green Belt and in the Niagara Skartment, would be right in line with that, because it's, in my opinion, setting precedence, because if you're taking those strips out because they're serviced, then you might as well do them all. So I can appreciate where the staff's coming from. Can you flip to where we requested that the lands come out in the Lower Stony Creek, and what's actually being recommended? Keep going, please. Right there. So counsel's direction was to ask for, basically, the dark green to come out in both areas, right? So the Edie Smith lands is the one that's right beside the large, pink property, and the other portion we asked for it to come out was the land surrounding 50 Road. What was the rationale for the province to not at least take that northwest corner of 50 and Barton and include the entire area so that the roads then become the boundary? I hate boundaries like this, because how do you know where the boundary starts and stops when you're standing in the middle of the field? So what was the rationale to at least not take the rest of that portion out to make it all uniform, and that the roads would now be the boundary, making it so simple for anybody who was just even driving by?
Through you, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, the province didn't provide any rationale to accompany the proposed changes when they were released, so we're, at this point, not certain.
And similarly, we have the same issue about the Miles Road, going straight to Miles Road. Now we've got it in the middle of two fields. So to me, the rationale should always be, the boundary should be very defined and cannot be moved, and a road is a perfect, a perfect measuring stick for that. Anyways, those are my comments from now. Thank you, Chair. I'll take the chair back, and I'm going to Counselor Ferguson.
Madam Chair, did you mention at the start, there's delegations on this issue?
Yes, we have two.
Okay, I'm going to wait till after the delegations, if I can.
Okay. So at this point, seeing no other questions and concerns, can we please receive Heather's presentation, please? Counselor Pearson, Counselor Pissut, all those in favor. Thank you. Okay, so now I need, we have two speakers on the agenda. Sarah, I'm going to call you down first, and this is on behalf of Avatar International You look like Sarah. And I just spilt all my juice here. I just spilt all my juice, so if I electrocute myself, you'll know what's happening. It's not on PowerPoint, is it?
No.
Then you're just going to have to deal with it. There we go. So Brenda, could you please introduce yourself?
Yes. Good morning, it's Brenda, it is, no, it's good afternoon, it's Brenda Case from GSP Group. We represent Avatar International and 1-800-615-Ontario Inc., which is, Mr. Mancha and Mr. D'Chenzel are here today as well, representing, who are the owners. We'd just like to reiterate what you were actually just discussing, Madam Chair, and that pertains to the northwest corner of Barton Street and 50 Road. So these lands were originally included in the urban boundary as a part of the Scooby development in the former city of Stony Creek, and they weren't included in the ultimate urban boundary because of the Green Belt Plan was initiated at that point in time. So the city has, city staff have recommended that these lands be taken out of the Green Belt Plan, and we support that 100%, and they were, they supported this in their submission to the province, as well as our submission to the province. And we just want to reiterate, just very, very briefly, these lands are, really are an anomaly in the sense that the other areas, while shouldn't be in the Green Belt Plan either, ours are a very small parcel, we're bounded by the urban boundary and two arterial roads. It makes complete sense for those lands to be taken out of the Green Belt Plan, included within the, within the urban boundary. So that's really the reason for our presentation, just to support staff's recommendation and to reiterate what our concerns are with the, what has happened over the last five years, I guess, in this Green Belt process. So perhaps Mr. Mancha would like to add something?
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Ben, and good afternoon. Sergio Mancha, I'm here on behalf of Avatar International, with my partner, Mr. Anthony D'Chenzel. Not to repeat what's already been said, not only by staff and Brenda, but I think you put it in perspective, Madam Chairman. Boundaries are usually corridors, streams, roads, right-of-way, et cetera, and that's traditionally what we've practiced in Ontario, and that's why we are scratching our heads, as you can see above us. And if I could just point out, the limitations of the subdivision right now is, I'm sorry, is, is somewhere behind a school, beside a school, beside a block of townhouses, and south of a road, so it's an interesting line. Having said that, I just want to reiterate, and not imply that the committee hasn't already seen this for about 50 times, this is completely an anomaly in comparison to the balance of the report. Now, I do want to say thank you very much with respect to this report. We've met on occasions with Mr. Robishon and staff, and Jason has taken his time to speak to us, and I understand that he's going to be meeting with the ministry shortly, in the next few months or weeks, rather. And the anomaly here is that in 2004, prior to, many of you were not around the table, the actual Scooby process took a long time. It took a long time in a sense where 2004 was closure, and then it went before a board because there were appeals, and as a result, there was a boo-boo, and that's all you can explain here, because no one can make sense of what happened. I'm not blaming the error, but there's an error here. So if we take the previous schedules that show Jones Road, areas to the north and south of this, or, sorry, west, excuse me, east and south of this, they're unique, that, basically, that, thank you, that they came about after discussions in the process of the Green Belt. Ours was already in, in your Scooby report. So we discussed about urban boundary. We were already in the urban boundary, recommended for urban boundary, and something happened, and we don't understand what happened, but let's all agree that it's an error. Having said that, let's, one step further, we're going to proceed with our subdivision. Sewers are there. Obviously, we had to upgrade our services to include the Green Belt. Your engineering department can confirm that. So let's assume three, five windows, through the window five years from now, we have a complete subdivision, along with the school, which has been open now for two years. We can't grow anything on that. It's drier than a desert. It's drier than a desert. You're basically looking, and the ministry has to understand this, you're basically looking at a dry field that's gonna blow dust, that we're gonna try to mitigate, we're gonna have, well, you're gonna have calls and we're gonna have calls, and someone's just gonna wake up and say, "Ministry, we appreciate there might be some inconsistencies through your whole plan throughout Ontario, and that might take years to resolve, but this one is a boo-boo." Having said that, what I would like to ask, Madam Chairman, through you and members of committee, and hopefully through Counsel, is that we just take one last stab at direction, saying, "This one was an error. It needs to be looked at." A little closer than the balance, and overdue course, I think the rest of these will come in and be rectified. So again, Scooby was there. It was no challenge by Counsel, by committee, by staff, by ourselves, that it should have been in the urban boundary. And finally, the real thing that bothers me so is that the Ministry of Transportation and Metrolinks have decided, with the assistance of your help, of course, to have a go on 50 Road and at the new power center. Ideally, if this isn't the spot for growth, regardless of our, regardless of what side of the road, what is? What's the point of having a stop less than 500 meters away? And your infrastructure's there, but your intensification is not. Having said that, with all due respect, I'd ask that members, maybe one of the members here, add some flavor to this particular 10-acre parcel that would go directly to the ministry when Mr. Thorn does meet with them. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And Counsel Pearson, if you can take the chair. I just want to clarify a few things. Go Station is, we've put in a preferred site. It's not a go yet, no pun intended, but the city of Hamilton actually asked Metrolinks that that was our preferred site, but we still don't know. So I don't want to mislead the public that it's coming and everybody's gonna be hammering, finding out when it is. And the other clarification, streams and woodlots are still, to me, not a boundary because they can move. They can disappear. So I still like the roads, that's why I mentioned it earlier. So I don't believe that, in my opinion, being the word Counsel, I'm against, or I'm not opposed to asking the province, once again, to put this back out of the Green Belt, because it doesn't make any sense. It does finish off the subdivision, but also, it also provides another roadway to come out onto Barton Street, because right now, we're pushing everything through the existing residential, which is not ideal. So again, thank you very much for your... And I'll take the chair back. No other questions. Receive the presentation, please. Counsel Pearson, Counsel Farr, all those in favor? Thank you. So now we have Suzanne coming down.
Thank you yet again for allowing me to speak. I will limit some of my comments to the scope of the presentation that you afforded me the opportunity to make about a month ago, which was long, and I felt kind of bad that I had done that to you because I felt like I was giving you, I was the bearer of the bad news in advance of the staff report. I am sad to see, but I'm not surprised to see, that the staff have come to the same conclusions that I had in terms of the ramifications of some of the proposals that are, or the implications of some of what the province is proposing. So, I mean, today, I was pleased to see that staff's recommendation is not to support the 80-person jobs per hectare, nor the 60% intensification. While not something that I had contemplated in my presentation to you a month ago, the further recommendations, in the event that the province proceed, would be something that we would be very supportive of. I think that anything that could be done to make this more realistic for us, to really put into place, is key here. So that would be one of the first things that I would say. I would also say that I was pleased to see that the staff's report recommended that the way the density is calculated be net of certain things, such as infrastructure, parks, and things like that, because again, it takes those densities and it makes them just that much more reasonable, even higher than what we have now, but not as high potentially as the impacts that I had sent to you a month ago, which, you know, were up in the over 160-person jobs per hectare. The one thing I'm disappointed that isn't in the report, and was something that we had requested that time, was the decoupling of industrial and residential densities. I do acknowledge that city staff is supportive of prime employment areas, and that I am supportive of, and the association is supportive of, but there is still this sort of dichotomy that any lack of density in an industrial zone has to be made up in that residential area. And I think that, you know, it's something that if it could be added to the report, we would be very much appreciative of, and I don't think that it in any way speaks against or is counter to anything else that you're proposing in your report. There's two items I just wanted to make a comment on that weren't in my original presentation, and one is, we agree with the city's presentation or the request that they work for a land, a land budgeting. That is something that is really crucial to all of us, to understand how this works, what land is left, how we build on it, and it be consistent sort of throughout the province. The only other thing I want to mention is that we haven't had the opportunity to look at how the transit corridors and densities in those major transit stations occur. That wasn't part of what we do. But I will say that it is, I think it's appropriate, as has been stated here, that density is aligned with those major transit corridors, because that makes best use of that infrastructure money, and so we are supportive in that regard. I mean, this, I guess we all know that this group of policies is a beast, and so this presentation that I'm putting forward here really is based on those four main points that I'd made a month ago. I think it's crucial that as we move forward, a lot of policies will have to change how we do things, and we would look forward to working together with you. My last point here is that I did send you all an invitation. We are having a breakfast workshop next Friday, and I had invited all of you to attend, and it's really how to make this work. This workshop isn't about what's wrong with this plan, it's really how do we make it work. So I would reiterate that that invitation is open to all members of this committee and Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please, to receive the presentation? Counsel Conley, Counsel Partridge, all those in favor? Thank you. And as far as I know, Ida, I don't see any other delegates on here, and yet, when I was speaking with the public earlier, I believe there was one coming for another section, correct? Am I wrong? I was looking at all our notes, and I don't see any.
There's no more delegations.
No more delegations. Okay. So we've got the motion for the report on the table. Counsel...
Oh, Chair, thank you. I just wanted to be sure through you to Mr. Thorn, then, the comments that have been made and the directive as far as the input to be put forward, do we just, can we just give that as direction to Mr. Thorn when he makes presentations to the province?
I'm sorry, I didn't get that either.
The concerns, Mr. Mancha mentioned that we reiterate certain points. I'm just wondering, be sure that Mr. Thorn is taking that as direction, that he will be sure to stress the concerns that were raised today by the presenters.
So, Mr. Thorn, you've got a lot of things up here that the staff have presented. This is what they've recommended, province ignored. This is what they didn't recommend. This is what province included. Will you be taking this report in its entirety, as we've sent it the first time? Would you be highlighting certain things or highlighting the whole report as a whole?
Through the chair. So my intent was to take whatever the Counsel adopted position is, and to take that to the meeting with the Assistant Deputy Minister, to walk them through all of the various comments that the city is making on the growth plan and the Green Belt Plan. If there's direction beyond that of areas of emphasis or stress that this committee would like me to focus on, I'm happy to do that. Otherwise, my intent was to go through each of the items for both growth plan and Green Belt Plan, and explain the city's position and the rationale behind it.
And that, Madam Chair, thank you, and I appreciate that. And that rationale and direction will include what, as Mr. Mancha's raised, the Barton Street issue. That just makes absolutely no sense. I just want to be sure that that's something that's gonna be expressed very strongly to the minister, through you.
Yes, through the chair. I can take that as direction to make sure that one in particular is emphasized during the meeting.
Thank you.
But to be clear, you're going to be doing all the recommendations, because we have people in the audience, too, that said, "We didn't ask for this." Right? Okay. Thank you. All right. Counsel Ferguson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And first of all, I want to thank staff for removing the Robert E. Wade Park out of the Niagara Escarpment Plan. I know when I, the four years I sat on the NEC, the staff there kept coming to us, "When they had the review, would you please get that area removed? It's an intensive park, and every time you want to do something to the soccer field, to the ball diamonds, to the arenas, you need an NEC-approved permit, and it's an intensive park." So I want to thank staff for including that, and hopefully the province will come on side for that. The other thing I want to speak about, and Heather's just gonna pull it up, is the Book Road area. And I know, I heard that you received some delegations at the last meeting. Unfortunately, had a conflict and wasn't able to attend. In fact, I wasn't even aware they were coming in. And just some history on this area. It was originally going to be in, I'm told, I'm biased, it was originally going to be in the original Green Belt, because it's strange that this part was carved out when the original Green Belt was struck. And on drilling down with the province on this, there was a very charming lady called Diane Dupé, a nice French gal, who operates something called the Blacklight Theater in Toronto. It's a very popular theater where it's done in black light, and it's done with actors who are disabled. And she had bought a large plot of property in this Book Road area and was gonna move that theater to Ancaster. During, now, she had some members who were aboard, who were very well-connected with the province, and made arrangements to carve this area out at that time, because it just seems strange to me, that little corner, that area four, why that was carved out. And she came in with an application and hit some roadblocks, of course, with our staff, because it's in area zone agriculture. There's no services available. It's only gravel roads. Got some pushback at my community council, particularly from the community and all the buses that would be coming in, because it's a very large theater. So she subsequently withdrew that application, and staff have formally closed the file, and it's no longer out there. Let me just start by saying that I support the province putting this in the Green Belt. It should have been there originally. I know that won't be popular, there's some people who appeared last week, and some people are behind me today, because anybody who owns property in that area would win the lottery if this come into the urban area boundary. But it is outside the urban area boundary. And through you, if I can, to our Director of Planning, Steve, is the Book Road area, is there any plans to move that inside the urban area boundary?
Steve?
Through you, Madam Chairman. No, there are no plans to include those, to bring those lands into the urban area boundary at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you on that. And we've gone through explosive growth in Ancaster. When I went on Ancaster Council in the mid-'80s, the population was 14,000. It's now 40,000. And I know, Madam Chair, you and Plumber are experiencing the same growth that we've gone through for the last 25 years. But coupling that, Madam Chairman, you know as well as I do that the Airport Employment Growth District came into fruition a year ago, but it was a four-year process, and that brought 855 acres of prime agricultural land inside the urban area boundary. And Phase 2 of that is immediately adjacent to this land. So this would pull a bunch more out if it ever moved towards development, which I have serious issue with, because we've already lost 855 hectares of the area. Now, so west of Fiddler's Green Road is Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Airport Employment Growth District. The west area for Phase 1 is Highway 403. So it'll progress to Fiddler's Green Road. This Book Road area starts at Fiddler's and runs to Shaver, and then from Garner down to just south of Book. And, you know, I think that we need to preserve this as agricultural land, and I think the province feels the same way as why they included it. And, you know, I'm sitting, listening to the debate about why was the Scooby lands carved out? It's inside the urban area boundary. And I would be okay with a resolution from this committee saying, "We support the province now, putting the Book Road area in the Green Belt." And by the way, because of this large plot of land that you would put in the Green Belt, you should reconsider maybe the Scooby lands. Just a suggestion. Only the Stony Creek councilors understand this, and how badly you need it, but I'm hearing that particularly that 50 Road area, we want to square it off by roads. If you want to suggest the province, put Book Road in, we'll support that now, but please take that Scooby area. I'm okay with that. But at the end of the day, I can't make a motion here, because I'm not on the committee, I would support endorsing the province's move to include the Book Road area in the Green Belt and squaring that four area off the way it should have been originally, but it was stopped for political reasons because of a very popular theater in Toronto that wanted to move out here. So I'm open for any questions on this, but that's my position, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Green.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And so I'm fully happy to support and move the additions of these lands into the Green Belt. I just want to make sure that in doing so, aside from the Scooby deal, because as you may remember, members of this committee, I opposed removing any lands from the Green Belt, but would certainly be happy to, at the appropriate time, move that this be added into.
Okay. And Counsel Farr? Any other questions or comments? All right. So that is an amendment to the recommendation, because my understanding is, the staff didn't have a recommendation for Book Road, but the new improved map that came out has Book Road in it. So we've already asked that Jason Thorn's gonna take that report as it exists right now, go to the ministry and talk about all the different points. So just to be clear, Mr. Thorn, up to now, you did not get any Counsel direction on Book Road either way. So it's very helpful that the motion comes through, that you are asked to then reiterate the province's recommendations for Book Road.
Yes. If Counsel wants me to bring that forward to the ministry as Counsel, supporting the addition of those lands to the Green Belt, then I would need some sort of direction to do that.
Okay. So just because I wanted to go through process here, Counsel Pearson was very clear, asking Jason, what's he gonna talk to the ministry about, and basically, it's the entire project, all the recommendations that the city of Hamilton have done. What we're asking now, or what this committee's asking now, is to add another recommendation, and that is to endorse the Book Road inclusion. Correct?
So where my clarity is, and again, if it's an amendment to an additional recommendation...
Right.
I could support it as a standalone, but I'm not gonna be supporting the removal of any lands with Green Belt.
No, no, no. I agree.
Because I'm seeing some of the other points here, and my concern is that I might have just encumbered this on my own.
Yep. I also disagreed on a few pieces, so that's not a problem. So the amendment to the staff report is, according to Counsel Farr and Counsel Green, is to include the Book Road recommendation, because up to this point, the staff recommendations did not include or disclusive, unincluded. So that's what I'm asking. So the staff presentation said that the province asked for Book Road. We didn't have an opinion either way.
Right.
So you're basically asking the staff to include staff's, or Counsel's opinion, to include Book Road into their report going to the ministry?
Correct. That's my motion as a standalone motion.
Yes.
Not an amendment, because I see here, Madam Chair, that we're affirming recommendations regarding the removals from the Green Belt of Stony Creek, and I don't want to have to rehash all of that because...
No, no, no. But it can be an amendment. You can vote for the amendment and then vote against the whole report, as I did.
Happy to do so. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you. So all those in favor of this recommendation put forward, that the city council now has a position on Book Road, and that is to include it in the Green Belt? All those in favor? Thank you. The report as presented? All those in favor? And amended? All those in favor? Any opposed? So we got two. Oh, sorry. We'll do the same two. That's, oh, no, not, sorry. So Counsel Partridge and Counsel Pearson is going to move the report as a whole, as amended? And any of those opposed? Because there's still parts of this, I think, are ridiculous. Okay. Thank you. I think we got Suzanne coming again, but we'll just hold that off for a minute. Response to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Ministry of Housing Consultation Guide on Inclusionary Zoning, PED 16176, citywide. Before we consider 8.5, we have one delegation on the matter. Do you want a staff overview before Suzanne makes her way down? A brief one would be fine.
I'll just give it a second before I begin.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, and good afternoon, committee, members of staff, and members of the public. I'll try to give some emphasis to the old adage that they save the best till last. On that note, I would like to extend some thanks. This has been a team effort in compiling this response to the ministry. It's involved Mr. Robichaud, Christine Newbold, and our colleagues at Housing Services, Dave Brodadi and Kirsten Maxwell. So today, within this report, is the city's response to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Ministry of Housing's Consultation Guide on Inclusionary Zoning. I was before a number of councillors back in May, going through some background information on inclusionary zoning. Certainly, it's a term that's gained more momentum in recent months. To begin in terms of definition, inclusionary zoning refers to policies, bylaws, and programs that increase the number of affordable units through acquiring development proposals to include affordable housing units, and to ensure those units are maintained as affordable over a period of time. On May 18th of this year, the ministry tabled Bill 204, the Promoting Affordable Housing Act 2016, at the Ontario Legislature. This bill fulfilled the ministry's promise made in March to update Ontario's long-term affordable housing strategy, and introduce legislation that would grant municipalities new planning tools to implement inclusionary zoning policies and bylaws. Should the bill be passed, it would amend six provincial acts, and more specifically, introduce the following legislative changes. I won't go in depth through each legislative change, but certainly we will, there will be the ability for municipalities to include in their official plan policies authorizing inclusionary zoning. There will be a prohibit of appeals for zoning policies, prohibit the Committee of Adjustment from granting relief from an inclusionary zoning bylaw, prohibit the use of bonusing where there is an inclusionary zoning bylaw, establish by regulation parking and loading standards for those units affected by an inclusionary zoning framework, establish the regulation site plan standards, once again, for those units within an inclusionary zoning framework, be able to set through regulation the applicable fees for Planning Act applications, establish reporting and monitoring requirements, and restrict the payment of cash in lieu or off-site provisions for affordable units. Concurrently with the tabling of the legislation, the ministry issued the Inclusionary Zoning Consultation Discussion Guide. The guide contained a list of questions that were intended to facilitate discussion and elicit input regarding how the implementation details, including matters noted above, will be addressed in the forthcoming regulations. Once again, I won't go through each individual program element, but will note that each one is inextricably linked, depending on the nature of the framework. It's a complex framework that would ensure the need for significant review and identification of the implications of each of these program elements. In preparing for the report, staff did consult externally with the Housing and Homelessness Planning Group, as well as the Development Industry Liaison Group. Those comments are presented within the report, and I think you'll see that overall, there's a general support for the process provincially and municipally for inclusionary zoning. Certainly from the Housing and Homelessness Planning Group, there was support, the ability of municipalities to employ cash in lieu in some limited circumstances, in order to enable flexible implementation. And they also suggested that the study be based on the number of households who live in poverty, in order to be most responsive to Hamilton's housing issues. With respect to the Development Industry Liaison Group, it was supported as a provincial framework. They did note that existing delays in the planning process must be addressed to improve overall supply, and that was one of the overall issues with relation to affordability. They stressed the importance of the threshold and set aside levels. These have to be reasonable and meaningful. And also emphasized the importance of the offsets, measures, and incentives, which they considered critical to the success of an inclusionary zoning framework. Finally, they did note this option of transition and grandfathering certain applications through the process. Should an inclusionary zoning framework be implemented, there would be a requirement within those timelines to recognize and offset any financial parameters previously unaccommodated. In terms of Hamilton's specific context, there's certainly some challenges and opportunities with an inclusionary zoning framework. The challenges, you know, as listed here, include the fact that we do have a varied selection of communities throughout Hamilton. The market challenges, we've seen some substantial growth over recent years, but most inclusionary zoning frameworks are predicated on a very robust housing market, so further information would need to be garnered in order to ensure that we have the right circumstances to employ inclusionary zoning. Some density challenges from a city's perspective, we do look at our zoning bylaws and official plans in order to ensure that we meet appropriate planning outcomes, and we do zone our properties accordingly. We don't, you know, look at certain sites and underzone them purposely, we want to avoid applications where possible. So when we speak to potential density increases as offsetting inclusionary zoning, that becomes a little bit more of a challenge, once we finalize our comprehensive zoning bylaws. We have a wide spectrum of units in Hamilton, number of multiple dwellings, all the way down to grade-oriented rural subdivisions, and that would all have to be accommodated through the inclusionary zoning framework. And there's some competition issues. We have heard from the province that this will be an enabling legislation, and so there's an opportunity whereby certain municipalities will adopt, while others may not adopt, and so we have to be cognizant of potential competition issues that may arise through that. But certainly, there are opportunities. I've mentioned the high growth. We're also starting to see in Hamilton, the negative consequences of gentrification, you know, people no longer being able to afford certain homes in their neighborhood of choice. There's an opportunity to create that equitable provision of affordable housing throughout the City of Hamilton. There's an availability of underutilized land that, once again, through intensification and through an appropriate inclusionary zoning framework, can provide those additional affordable units. And there's the ability to work towards satisfying some of the affordable housing targets that we do have. What this means for Hamilton? I mean, certainly, it's one potential tool to assist, but not resolve Hamilton's affordable housing issues. It certainly can moderately increase the supply of ownership units priced at just below market. There are greater challenges, obviously, with rental and with deeper affordability. Hamilton, as we are aware, has significant issues in the creation of affordable units, and that, you know, greater focus and attention is required to meet those targets. With deeper affordability and additional rental units, will likely require a city to provide additional subsidies and incentives. And overall, there's an element that significant consultation and research will be required to better determine individual program elements, before we fully vet the implications of an inclusionary zoning framework for Hamilton. In terms of the specific responses to the proposed legislation, I've mentioned it is predicated on being an enlabelling legislation. However, some of the wording of the legislation will provide the opportunity for the minister to mandate affordable housing framework on certain municipalities. We're speaking with the ministry, that is not considered at this point in time, but it will be a component of the legislation. So through our report, we did ask for greater clarification on that point. They will be able to prescribe fees for Planning Act applications. Certainly, in a previous report that I did, we did look at reducing fees, but these could be fees applied through the province, to which we would have to apply ourselves municipally. There's some discussion at the suitability, there's been a lot of focus on how to ensure that those affordable units are suitable, both in terms of the size, configuration, and location within buildings and subdivisions. There's the authority that the ministry would have with respect to prescribing parking regulations for those affordable units. There's concern municipally, as we all know, that parking remains a hot topic, and when we go through this process, we want to have at least some ability to review this ourselves locally. There's some discussion in my report in terms about the opportunity for cash in lieu. At this point in time, the legislation does not contemplate cash in lieu for affordable units, but within limited circumstances, staff consider that this would actually provide for a more meaningful and flexible application of the zoning framework. And finally, staff are seeking additional clarification on some of the more detailed aspects of an inclusionary zoning framework, such as condominium fees, when there's buildings that are clearly requiring high-cost condominium fees, how will they be brought in under the same framework? In terms of the response to the Consultation Guide, in summary, really, within a provincial framework, individual program and implementation elements should primarily be determined at the local level, and that this would ensure that there's a level of consistency between municipalities, and that should the City of Hamilton choose to adopt inclusionary zoning, it would be based on a framework that is meaningful and responsive to the specific housing challenges in Hamilton. That was a very brief overview of the report. I'd be happy to ask any questions that arise.
Thank you. I have Counselor Green, wishing to ask a question.
Thank you very much. So pursuant to this, the recommendations to support inclusionary zoning, I noticed, and you brought it up, because you may remember, Madam Chair and members of this committee, after the Tivoli, I moved a motion that would have had a cash-in-lie opportunity to potentially look at offsetting some of our deferred maintenance for city housing in Hamilton. It was very, kind of prescriptive motion. So that is not on the table, not a possibility, not being considered at any point in time?
So currently, the legislation through Bill 204 is restricting the use of cash in lieu for this framework. Our comments to the ministry, and if endorsed by this committee and council, will seek to have at least some limited opportunity for cash in lieu in circumstances where it makes sense for the provision of affordable units.
So it may. We may be able to use cash in lieu.
At this point, the legislation says, no, it's restricting that.
Right.
So the province have tabled the legislation, which says that it will restrict cash in lieu. Through our comments on that legislation, we are asking them to revisit that.
Got it, okay, yes, sorry. Thank you for the clarity, because I know restrict and prohibit could often be considered differently. It's a little bit ambiguous. Point three on page 7 of four lists the musts and the mayes. You had mentioned, through you, Madam Chair, this is an enabling legislation. The musts say that we basically have to include the requirements for the number of units, so be prescriptive. We have to have the owners enter into an agreement, so clear understanding. But then it goes into the mayes, which include the incentives. So if we wanted to, for example, provide inclusionary zoning along the LRT corridor, there may potentially be opportunity for incentive, as an example. We may be able to determine price of affordability. That may feels very ambiguous, in terms of how we go about, whether through, you know, market research or whatever. But just to be clear, there's a very big distinction between affordable housing, Madam Chair, and social housing. So affordability being defined as 10% below market rate, 15%, what is the current accepted definition of affordability?
Through the chair to the council, so you're correct. I mean, affordable housing as a definition has a number of different components out there. Certainly, from the municipality, we would look to the provincial policy statement and its definition of affordable housing, which speaks to the 30% and the 10% below market cost. But through this process, there may be an opportunity to look at the definition of affordable housing as it relates to an inclusionary zoning framework. And once again, you've made that distinction, that, you know, this is not an intended tool to accommodate or increase the amount of social housing. This is a focus on the affordability, so that 60th to 40th percentile of income, which, you know, basically, they earn too much to be eligible for social housing, but not enough to purchase at market or rent at market.
So in practical terms, Madam Chair, if there was a development going up, starting at the mid-350s, affordability would be in the 300s? Is that a fair kind of assessment locally here, kind of relevant to our pricing?
Through the chair to the council, there is some discussion in the report about what affordability could look like at the 60th percentile, at the 40th percentile, and certainly, we're looking in certain areas, that 300 could be then at that top end of affordability.
So just so that I'm understanding, bylaws passed by the municipality may include these features, so that, am I hearing then that there is very much an opportunity for us locally to kind of work through those decisions, and apply this as we, you know, see relevant to our communities here in Hamilton?
Through the chair to the councillor, certainly there. The Consultation Guide was split between these decisions being made at the provincial or the local level. Our response to the province has been that we really want to make many of these decisions at the local level, understanding the specific housing issues that Hamilton faces. And we are seeking for a toolbox, shall we say, from the province in order to help us deliver on those programmable elements, but for the flexibility to make it at the local level.
Last question, and I'll just wait. Thank you. No need to apologize at all, you gotta eat at some point. Been a long, long morning already. Feels like we're at the first day of school again. So last question, Madam Chair, through you, to Edward John, I know you and your staff, everybody's been working on this a long time, something I'm very excited about, and at the appropriate time, we'll move this recommendation. In your professional opinion, have we gone as far as we can go, notwithstanding the so-called market soundings, which say this is never going to be viable in Hamilton, have we gone as far as we can go, and are we being as progressive as we can, to help provide an adequate housing mix in relation to the hyper-gentrification displacement that's happening in this city? In your professional opinion?
Through the chair to the councillor, I mean, I've had personal experience with inclusionary zoning. It's one tool that deals with a limited subsection of affordable and affordability. It's a useful tool, if successful, but it needs a comprehensive approach. So as I go back to this idea of being one element, there's going to be many different elements that we're going to have to comprehensively create as a package to deal with the wide range of housing issues that we currently face here in Hamilton.
And of that, it was a very, that was a good answer. Didn't really answer the question, and I'll restate it. In your professional opinion, does this one element, as being presented to us by the province, is it, in your professional opinion, have we gone far enough with inclusionary zoning as it's presented in these recommendations?
Through the chair to the councillor, it's difficult to answer that question, because we're still at defining the programmable elements. In my opinion, this will and can be a successful tool, not only for Hamilton, but all of Ontario. It's my role and my duty to try and make sure that it is successful. So if that requires looking at a very specific element of the housing continuum in which to create affordability, then that may be concluded through the research and greater attention to some of those programmable elements. But I am excited about the tool. I think it has limitations, and I think understanding those limitations are key for it to being successful.
Excellent. Madam Chair, I just have to say that when we embarked on this quite some time ago, you know, the only, one of the only decisions or cases that came before the planning committee, where I really wasn't comfortable with, I'll say it again, was the Tivoli project. I followed up with the section 37 and started to talk about inclusionary zoning. I know it had happened here before, and I know it doesn't happen as fast as we would like it to, but I am very grateful to staff for moving on this opportunity through the long-term housing strategy put forward by the province. So at the appropriate time, I'll be moving these recommendations. Thank you very much, Mr. John.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Thanks, and I just wanted to say thanks to Ed, who's done a great job on this file, and others, of course. And I think you've done a good job from the start, Edward, in terms of tempering expectations, in terms of what we can expect to see from this. And I think originally, my comments were, just based on the current real estate climate here in the city, and some of the developments we see, you know, we're probably talking at the early stages and/or the infant stages of this being implemented, maybe a handful of new units for affordable housing. And every single one of those are needed. So for me, the fact that we have another tool, as you've described it, is a good thing. And it's great that the province has this on their radar screen, because I know for many years, there have been all kinds of housing advocates across the province who have pressured them to do something on inclusionary zoning. And so they're finally one step further, and that's a good thing. I think this especially works well in cities like Toronto, where we see, you know, a real estate market that's almost out of control, and densities that almost match the out-of-control nature of the market. nature of the market. And so when you're dealing with high densities and, you know, hundreds of units, it's a little bit easier to accommodate these additional affordable housing units within a development. Here in Hamilton, you know, our tallest building, I can't recall it, it's, I think it's 40 stories high, you know, that pales in comparison to probably, you know, half of the applications that Toronto's entertaining for its central business district right now. So there's two different climates, but the fact that this is going to be a tool for us to use on a go-forward basis is a good thing. And I think you and others within planning and housing have done a terrific job in terms of navigating us through this new issue for us, a new tool, and I think it'll benefit us. It's probably 10 or 20 years before we see some real substantive progress as it relates to new units. But that being said, the fact that we're talking about it and it's on the horizon is a good thing.
I just want clarification on inclusionary housing. So we build a new apartment building or complex, is there a percentage that would be inclusionary housing, or is it up to us to pick? It's going to be 20% or 5% or whatever? How does that work?
Through the chair to the councillor. Those are one of the main key questions. Through this report and discussion, we're seeking that the province give us the opportunity to make those decisions locally about what those percentages will be and where it will hit in terms of the scale of development. Those are something that we're really going to have to review. I mean, this is, I mean, the success is key to the robustness of the housing market, so we will need to understand that quite implicitly to know what the market can bear and what we can achieve successfully. And I think you're going to hear in a little while Suzanne Mammell from, as a representative of the Development, Industrial and Industry Liaison Group, and she'll have some comments to that effect, that, you know, the combination of these different program elements is crucial to the success, and we have to get that right.
So do you think that it'll be a local decision on the percentages, or will it be dictated through the province, through the chair, please?
Through the chair to the councillor. My impression is that they will be giving the local municipalities the authority to make some of those decisions, based on the very varied nature of municipalities across Ontario.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you for your presentation. This would be, this would apply to all new builds in the city?
Through the chair to the councillor, to be decided. So as one of those program elements, we could decide that it would apply to developments of a certain threshold. So anything over 10 units, then the inclusionary zoning may be implemented. Or conversely, you can apply it at any range, so it could apply to any new development. But once again, making sure that we get something successful, spreading the cost of one inclusionary development or unit across the development of 50 units is a lot different to, you know, two units. So, you know, we have to make those decisions and ensure that it is successful.
Through the chair, thank you. Just trying to get it clear in my head, how it would work, let's suggest it is a new townhouse complex, 50 units. Would a person then, would one of those or a percentage of those units be $50,000 cheaper, and someone could buy, purchase the exact same unit for that much cheaper?
Through the chair to the councillor, that's one example of how it could operate. That's right.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Actually, if I may, just one more question. How would that impact taxes? Would the tax rate be impacted by that as well, or?
Through the chair to the councillor, it's a great question. It's one that we've raised through some of our discussions with the ministry, because that's, you know, through MPAC municipal decisions, you know, there's that implication that if they are purchasing the unit at a reduced cost, but still paying the same taxes on a market unit, that that too may affect the longevity of the affordable unit. So it has yet to be decided.
Through the chairs, the province thinking of giving them a break on hydro, too, because they might need that more than anything. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none, we have, I just need to receive the presentation, please, and then we have one delegate. So councillor Green, councillor Conley, all those in favor. Thank you. And we have Suzanne. You have one minute, Suzanne. You've used up all the others.
Oh, sure.
I promise to make this brief. So I guess the comments that I really want to make is that this whole process right now is very preliminary in nature. The consultation document in my mind is really one that the province is looking to gather information before they give us all the details that we're really looking for. I mean, a lot of the questions around the table, how will it affect taxes? How will the person buy? Nobody knows the answer to those questions. So it is important to keep that in mind. A lot of the rest of the details that I'm going to cover are very much are what Ed has already said. It's important to understand that inclusionary zoning is about just below-market units. It is not about social housing units. It's important that we understand that the quantity of units brought forward is not going to necessarily solve the problem that we have here in Hamilton. We have to take into account that, right now, we're sort of inundated with a lot of different policies by the province, and all of them are working together. It's not just inclusionary zoning, it's inclusionary zoning, it's the growth plan, it's all of these things. And they're all working together right now, and you can see the result in the market. And that is that the price of housing overall is increasing, and it's increasing at a far faster pace than people's incomes are increasing. So whether we talk about housing affordability or affordable housing, the reality is, is that for everybody, housing is not as affordable as it once was, and it is becoming a problem. So we have to look at all of this together. And it's important to note that, one thing, if we provide units through affordable housing or through an inclusionary zoning policy, I'll use the example that Ms. Skelly had put together. If a unit's put and it's $50,000 cheaper, currently, the other homeowners will pay that difference. So if a unit is $350,000 and you give it to somebody for 300, those other unit owners, they will end up paying that increase, unless there's a set of financial tools put together by the feds, the province, whatever. So it now takes the price of the house that was 350, maybe it becomes 360, to accommodate that. So we're solving one problem, but we're exacerbating another problem. So we really have to look at all of that. And so, you know, one of the things that our association through the Ontario Home Builders is saying, province, you need to put a set of financial tools together. And I think that's one of the things that Ed was really alluding to, is that this is a really, it's going to be a tough nut to crack, because, you know, we have to balance all of these things together. So the only item I do want to clarify, and it was a comment that was made in the staff report as a result of the DILG workshop, which we were very appreciative that we were afforded that opportunity to do. But our association is very concerned with the use of cash and lieu. I wouldn't say that across the board, it's not appropriate, but across-the-board use of it would maybe exacerbate the issue that you want affordable housing units across the city. You don't want them necessarily concentrated in one building or in one neighborhood. And so that is one of the cautionary tales that I would put associated with that. So much like I've said with the growth plan and the green belt, we're at the very early stages of this. It's, members of my association are going to end up building these units, and so we would very much hope to work with you in terms of how this moves forward, given whatever the province may elect, that the city can decide of their own volition. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Just a second. Councillor Skelly.
Thank you. Through the chair, just to have a question. Do you know of, do you have any examples of where this has worked or hasn't worked? Are you with any other provinces or municipalities that have introduced this?
So inclusionary zoning isn't currently something that's available in the province. There are some municipalities who, through the use of section 37 bonusing, do take that and have units provided to them. But I don't have personal experience. I am aware of a presentation, actually, I think it was a presentation made here to this committee some months ago, was from Markham, I believe, and he said that they had started that type of a process. So it's those types of things. With the legislation written the way it is, you wouldn't be allowed to double up on section 37 bonusing and inclusionary zoning. Inclusionary zoning is, it would be an either-or situation. I know that in the city of Burlington, talking to their staff, if they had to choose between one or the other, they have said that they will go with section 37 bonusing, because they feel that they get more bang for their buck, and what they're looking for is more of a social housing issue. But I'm not, I don't, I don't know how other people will balance these two things.
Councillor? Thank you. Through the chair, my concern would be, and I don't know if this is even, could be an issue, but if, in a new development, again, we're talking about affordable housing, not social housing, 10 couples purchase a home, and one of those couples is paying, you know, significantly lower amount, I'm wondering if there's going to be pushback on something like that as well, when people recognize that, you know, they may feel as if somehow they're subsid, as you said, they're paying an increased cost to subsidize somebody else's unit. Is there a concern about that?
Sure there is. Ed and I had this conversation, actually, about 8:30 this morning, is there could be a stigma attached to those families. Say you move into a condo building, and like, we don't know how the rules will work. We don't know. You know, condo fees in some of these buildings in a family-sized unit could be 600, 700 bucks a month. Like, that alone is a huge cost. So how do you, even if you get them a unit, how do they afford the ongoing costs? So, you know, there could be something where, you know, if I'm that family who is paying the reduced rate because I qualify for affordable housing, and the other nine neighbors know, how will they treat me? You don't know. But that, but it definitely could be a problem. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to receive, delegation, please. Councillor Conley, councillor Partridge, and you're dismissed, Suzanne, for the day. Okay, so any discussion or concerns about eight point five, I believe, we're on? Thank you. Councillor Partridge.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of questions for staff, and I thank Suzanne for her presentation, and councillor Skelly for her question. So through you to, I believe it would be Edward. Edward, nice to see you again, since you're no longer working in our area, and you've been conded to work downtown. Anyway, so my question is, along the lines of reducing the cost of a unit, so someone's paying less and the others would possibly be paying more to compensate for that, when it comes to MPAC, though, MPAC assesses the value. And so through you, Madam Chair, they're going to pay the same rate of taxes. Is that correct? Because my understanding is, we do not have any kind of a program with the Ontario government or any government to allow that to be different.
Through the chair to the councillor, that's correct. That was one of the concerns that has been raised through this process when we've been having discussions with the ministry. It rings similar to the condo fees, you know, are those going to be applied in equal measure, even though they put a subsidized unit? Are they expected to pay, you know, the higher cost of this condo fee? So it has been, and it has been part of the consultation with the ministry, whether there's any opportunity to revisit that. But at this point, that's our understanding.
Sorry, Madam Chairman. The only thing is, building on Mr. John's presentation, is there would be a resale control mechanism on the owner-occupied affordable housing units? It would almost be a restrictive covenant or something registered on title that would deal with the price of those units and what sort of inflation would be assigned to those prices. So that unit, if it was brought in, say, 20% below market, it would always remain 20% below market, and that would be a consideration that I would assume that MPAC would take into, would factor into valuing that unit, because you buy the unit below market, and it would stay below market, as opposed to getting a windfall that you're buying effectively a subsidized unit. So that would then, since the taxes are a function of the property value, that ultimately, that should be reflected in the tax rate, because that unit has a lower property value, the property taxes should be lower, and that property value is more or less guaranteed through some sort of agreement registered on title for 20, 30, or 40 years. And that's the experience in other jurisdictions that have done inclusionary zoning. I think they started with 20 years was the original timeframe, but in most of the American and European jurisdictions that have done inclusionary zoning, they're now looking at extending those agreements out to 30 or 40 years to ensure that they remain affordable for the long time, long term, as opposed to being a one-time windfall for the first person who purchases that unit.
Okay. And so whose responsibility is that, though? Would that be the agreement that the city would put on the approval of the application? Would that be between the condo board and the owners? Who would be responsible for that?
Through the chair to the councillor. So securing the long-term affordability of the unit will be one of those program elements that will have to be determined. We are seeking through this report that it will be determined at the local level, so that we have the ability then to ensure for a certain period of time that that unit remains affordable.
Okay, thank you. I mean, it sounds good. It sounds good, but it also sounds to me like we don't have any real firm plan around that.
Through the chair to the councillor, it certainly is early stages of the construction of an inclusionary zoning framework.
Right.
You know, there are some considerable constraints throughout Ontario as to ensuring a meaningful framework. But like I say, it's the beginning motions of that journey. So, I mean, there's still a lot of optimism around an inclusionary zoning framework. We have sorted it as other municipalities in terms of a tool to deal with some of our housing issues, but it's a complex system.
And so, Madam Chair, I think that also raises more challenges or different challenges when it comes to the resale value of one of those units, because you're going to, you know, I mean, if MPAC does the assessment, when it comes up for resale, is it then going to be less in the resale amount? And we have no control over that. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chairman. The municipality, based on the other models, would actually build in a sort of a price index into the original purchase price, and any resales would be subject to that price index. So if the market was going up at, say, 10%, then that affordable unit might only go up at 6% or 8% or maximum of, and that would be factored into it, and that would be registered on title. And as Mr. John indicated, the program administration, the cost of the program administration and who is responsible for that, that is one of the questions that we've had for the province, as to how will that process play out, so that we don't, whether it be the municipality be responsible for monitoring those agreements on an annual basis, municipality having to approve any purchase and sale agreements when it comes time to sell those units. Those are some of the questions that we've asked, and that sort of gets to this idea, what is an inclusionary zoning agreement? How does it get administered? And who pays for that cost to administer that agreement on an annual basis?
Thank you. But at the end of the day, without the province participating and coming to the table with the other half of the agreement that we need, we really don't have a fulsome program right now. Is that correct?
That is correct. And through Madam Chairman, that is why we were asking for part of the, that was part of the provincial consultation paper, and part of our response back is around the issue of the administration of the inclusionary zoning affordability agreements on, basically in perpetuity, if they were to go out 30 or 40 years, and new units coming on stream every year, it would be an ongoing administrative issue that we would have to address.
Okay, thank you. And, Madam Chair, the last series of questions I have are, I've heard from developers, and I've talked to some staff in Burlington, and as Suzanne indicated, they prefer to go the other route through section 37. Have we had consultation with them?
Through the chair to the councillor, I have spoken through a number of different municipalities as they deliberate on inclusionary zoning. I've been part of, it's actually three portions of discussion that was organized by the ministry and involved not only municipalities but other sectors of the development area, so developers as well as not-for-profits. We've had those discussions. A lot of people are waiting to see the adoption of inclusionary zoning across the board. There's some concerns about that enabling component, certainly from a competition perspective, but also the fact that some municipalities have an effective section 37 process where they are gaining community benefit through the development applications. They're seeing some traction with that as they speak, and so, you know, they're a little bit reticent to alter the courses, so to speak, but certainly, everybody's receptive to this, understanding that it is complicated.
Yes, it is indeed complicated. And, Madam Chair, I guess my last question would be, and so my question was specifically about Burlington. And my question is, have we had consultation with Burlington to understand how they do it a little bit differently? Because from what I hear, not just from staff and other councillors, but I also hear from residents, is whatever they're doing, it does appear to be working for that community. And I asked that question, and if you don't, if we don't have the answer, that's fine, then I'll withdraw it. But I asked that question because I look at, you know, and it is, Burlington has 180,000, we have over 500,000, but if they have an affordability issue, and if they have, you know, issues with affordable housing there, we certainly have it here, and we're well aware of our issues. So if it's working, whatever they're doing, I just feel we need to take a look at it. So, you know, Madam Chair, perhaps, Edward, can you provide an answer for that, or no at this time? I'm okay with that.
Through the chair to the councillor. So informal discussions have taken place, but no formal responses have been received from Burlington. Are there
So, you know, Madam Chair, perhaps, Edward, can you provide an answer for that or no at this time? I'm okay with that.
Through the Chair to the councillor, so informal discussions have taken place, but no formal responses have been received from Burlington. The current report does seek direct staff to consult with the community. We could obviously include neighbouring municipalities in that consultation process to really garner exactly the success stories and the direction that other municipalities may be taking on this matter.
Yeah, and I would appreciate that, you know, only because my ward is, shares three boundaries with, certainly with Burlington, and, you know, so I hear this repeatedly. And I do think that with the issues that we have, which are, which are quite significant compared to other municipalities around us, that it certainly is worth having that conversation. And we do have our liaison committee with the mayor and myself, working very closely with Mayor Goldring and Mayor Craven, or Mayor Craven, Councillor Craven, just elevated him, in Burlington. And so, you know, we are looking at ways that we can share information and strengthen our communities by working together. So I'm just, I just think it's worth conversation, Madam Chairman, and I don't expect a reply to that, but I'll just leave that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Skelly.
Thank you. Through the Chair, expanding a little bit on what Councillor Partridge was raising, and that is, the resale process of a unit, if a person purchases a housing unit at a lower market rent and then in two years chooses to sell for whatever reason, how do you, how can we then dictate the price of that unit?
Through the Chair to the councillor, so one mechanism could be placing something on title of that property. That would ensure that that agreement to maintain the affordability of that unit is insured over the long term. Once again, those are one of the program elements that have to be decided, and the mechanisms in which to ensure that the province are directness that we have to have those measures in place, and so that will form part of this review process.
Yes, that's one question through the Chair. Who would enforce that? How do we keep track of this? Do we determine that it has to be, what is market rent? How do you assess what the new cost would be? And just to me, it sounds like it's very complex. And if a house has, the neighbour's home went up 75% and the house that you're talking about may, they may have done even more upgrades, how do you determine what that price would be for that, the cost of that home?
Through the Chair to the councillor, absolutely. It's complex. It's going to be a long process organising the framework and understanding exactly how it will play out over time. Certainly, my experience in the UK dealing with inclusionary zoning processes, there's an added element of program management, so it's actually a section which oversees this and deals with this on a day-to-day basis. But from a monitoring and enforcement perspective, there are some issues in terms of the amount of people and time that it does take.
Thank you.
Thank you. So may I have a motion, please, respecting 8.5? Moved by Councillor Green, seconded by Councillor Pearson. All those in favour? Thank you. Folks, I have to take you back to 8.3 because there's an amendment to the urban Hamilton official plan. Ida, can you please remind me who moved and seconded at 8.3? And the reason being is we've made an amendment to the official plan, which means we have to use the submission list, so we're going to have to go back to the people who originally passed it. 8.3? Go ahead, Ida.
Sorry, it was councillors Pearson and Partridge.
Okay, so we need to add to that amended that the submissions made regarding the matter affected the decision by supporting the granting of the amendment. So I just need to put that as an addendum. You're okay with that? All those in favour? Because of submissions. Thank you. Sorry, folks, now we're on to 9.1. Councillor Partridge.
Yep, thank you very much. And it's moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Pissuda, and I am going to read it out in its entirety. This is regarding the appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board of the City of Hamilton's refusal or neglect to adopt and amend the urban Hamilton official plan and zoning bylaw number 02-200 for lands located at 66 Innovation Drive, Flamborough, Ward 15, whereas the application has been made by 1592797 Ontario Limited, the applicant, to add a site-specific policy to Volume 3 of the urban Hamilton official plan UHOP to permit ancillary uses such as a recreation and fitness centre, and to amend the prestigious business park M3 Zone of zoning bylaw number 05-200 to permit a recreation and fitness centre as a permitted use, which it is not now, to establish parking requirements for a recreation fitness use, and to recognise an existing legal non-conforming landscape strip of three metres for lands located at 66 Innovation Drive, Flamborough. Whereas the applicant appealed the City of Hamilton's refusal or neglect to approve the application, whereas neighbouring residents have identified concerns regarding overflow parking and the resulting inability for delivery trucks to assess the adjacent business but have not had the opportunity to make submissions to city council regarding their concerns. And whereas city council desires to receive the input of the public regarding the application, therefore be it resolved, A, that staff be directed to prepare a report regarding the applicant's appeal to the city's planning committee at its meeting of September 20th, 2016; B, that staff be directed to advise all property owners within 120 metres of the subject lands of the September 20th, 2016 date of planning committee's consideration of the appeal of the application so that members of the public have the opportunity to appear as a delegation before the planning committee regarding the proposed development; and C, the staff be directed to report back on how to revise council's current policy respecting OMB appeals for non-decision to ensure the public has the opportunity to provide input. And if I may speak to it very briefly?
Two seconds. I need to intercept because Councillor Green needs to declare a conflict at this point.
Oh, sure.
So I believe that's why you're attending now.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Yes, I apologise for missing this when I read over it. It didn't even occur to me, but I'm-
So Ida, please take note.
Yep.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councillor Partridge.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that as it is with regards to a change in zoning for a fitness institute. So, you know, similar to today, the applicant, we had had meetings, we were working together, they had been in here a few times with staff, and, you know, and then it went directly, they took it directly to the OMB. And part of the reason, you know, could be that they just did not want to get the public input and then have that allowed participation at the Ontario Municipal Board. There is pushback for this particular, and it's an established business park that does not allow for fitness centres and for dance studios. And it's a prestigious business park, it's very clear within the zoning, and these folks were told that right at the beginning, but they've gone ahead with it. And so it makes it very, very difficult, again, when you do have people who have the right, the public, the local, the property owners within the 120 metres, they have the right to be able to come in and say their piece and to participate in any process that follows up on that, such as the Ontario Municipal Board. And that's all this motion is about, Madam Chair, is to allow staff to bring forward their information report and allow the residing businesses and property owners, because there are residences around this area as well, to be able to come in and have their say and to be considered within the Ontario Municipal Board process. So it's moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Pissuda, and I appreciate everyone's consideration to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any concerns or questions? All those in favour? Carrie, thank you. No opposition? Notices of motion? Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none? General information, Mr. Thorne?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I do just want to introduce one new staff person to committee who has been patiently attending his first planning committee meeting. This is Binu Kora. He's the new manager of engineering approvals within Tony Surges' group, so he's taking over from Daryl Smith. He started about two weeks ago, and you'll be seeing his face at this, at this front bench fairly often and at the podium as well as some of the adult applications come forward. So just wanted to welcome Binu and introduce you all to him.
Welcome indeed. Thank you. So, thank you very much for that. Any other general information before we continue on? Thank you. May I have a motion, please, to approve the changes to the outstanding business list as outlined in item 11.1 ANB? Councillor Pearson, Councillor Jayden Johnson? Somebody, no, that wasn't me.
No, it wasn't.
Okay, so can I have a, please have a motion to amend the outstanding business list? Councillor Farr, Councillor Skelly, all those in favour? Carrie, thank you. And may I have a motion, please, to adjourn? Thank you. Just pick any two. I'm sure you'd have eager people. Thank you, everyone.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]